Call the meeting to order. Bill said we're going to be a little late, so we're accepting guests. We're missing guests today. Any agenda revisions?
Yes, I need to add to the action agenda and accept the resignation. It's not one that will alarm you. You know this is happening. We just need to get it formalized.
So 5.2 accept.
Could I ask that 3.3 board goals just be held until 4.3 executive committee? Think that makes sense, Bill?
I think either way you can talk about it.
They roll it together.
Yeah, I think you can either talk about it in there and we can add in some of the retreat pieces that go with that.
So let's roll it into 4.3.
Okay.
It's the same thing.
Well, how about this? At other boards, they move 4.3 like right into the board goals discussion.
So why don't we do that?
Okay, so 4.3 will be part of
Of 3.3.
3.3.
Yeah, I can send you an email. That came out late last week.
Anything else? Okay. So any public comments or correspondence?
I didn't have public ones, but board ones. I just, we don't need to talk about it, but that data dialogue stuff. I just was looking. That came out the other day. Bill's already seen it, but it's pertinent to stuff we've talked about. So I just printed out copies for people to have. It's about the performance gap between
President.
Low financial, low income and free and reduced lunch and non-free and reduced lunch. Except it's across the entire Northeast. So it's just for information.
So does that agenda to have a motion to present?
So I would make a motion to approve the minutes of April 24th, 2018.
One second.
Any? Any discussion? Polls in favor of approving the minutes that submitted? Say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, discussion agenda. 3.1 winter student learning outcomes monitor report.
I have it up here. If you have it in her, do you have it in her? You did get it.
Yeah, we got it.
Okay. So if you want to look up here, you can.
I'll look up here.
So what we did is each of the principles were, we were tasked with looking at three pieces of data. Our reading data over from fall to winter. And I'll explain what that looks like. Math data and then some baby girl data. So that is what I will share with you tonight. First, we'll kind of review what is MTSS, which is multi-tiered systems of supports. What does our student data tell us? Our current state, some successes. What has worked well? Maybe some areas for growth or investigate further and then support from the board. You've all seen this, so it's not going to be any surprise to you. But so a multi-tiered system of support or approach, what we call MTSS, is comprehensive and systematic process for assessing and maximizing the opportunities to learn for all students within any content area. These bullets are just the importance. So it needs to be effective culturally responsive, differentiated first teaching tier one, and effective early intervening supports, looking at both academics and behavior. And then the components of Vermont's MTSS is that it's a systemic and comprehensive approach, effective collaboration, high quality instruction and interventions that's responsive and differentiated, comprehensive and balanced assessment system. And that the people providing that have the expertise, right? That there's well-designed professional development. Any questions about all of that? We have, we have a purpose statement at East Montpelier. When we created a number of years ago, the tier two supports, it's all this language, right? So those interventions must have these pieces.
Be an audience.
You can sit if you want.
That can be fine.
So looking at our reading data, this, so this looked at two pieces of data. It looked at the Fountas and Penau in the younger grades and the DRA2. So it was one assessment each child was given. In the fall, 43% of our students were proficient or proficient with distinction. That's levels three and four on the benchmark. And 57% of our students were not, which are levels one and two. Any questions about? So that's just one snapshot, one piece of data.
So that's fall data?
That is just our fall data.
So if they're, so it's benchmark. What grades were they again? I'm sorry.
That's okay. It was grades one. And in the fall, kindergarteners do not take this assessment. So it's grades one through six.
Oh, okay.
Using, do you still use two different ones? The DRA and the Fountas and Penau?
Yeah.
And are the benchmarks the same throughout the school year?
No, good point. So you're going to see the next slide is going to show the winter assessment and it's based on where they should be in the winter. So it's a different place than where they should be.
And this is based on where they should be in the fall?
Yes. So looking at, and so this, this change in percentage is not exact because it's actually where they should have been in the fall and then where they should be at that point.
So the bar is moving forward.
Right.
So, but what, I think what you want to see, levels three and four showing a growth, right? A positive change. Levels one and two, numbers going down, which our reading data shows just that. So in the winter, 71% of our students were levels three or four and 29% were still not.
So what it was getting to on the fall assessment? So I'll just pick a grade, third grade. In the fall, they're actually being assessed on grade two.
In the fall, they're being assessed at the beginning of grade three.
Okay, but it's primarily what they've learned up through and very early into grade three? Where the winter assessment is half or more through grade three?
So the winter assessment happens in January. So it's the first, it's most of the first semester. Yeah.
You're testing the learning of grade two in effect.
In the fall.
In the fall. But your, the benchmarks are toward that grade level at that point in the year.
The benchmark at the end of second and the beginning of third, is it the same level? Is it ours on this one?
It, yes.
But we see that summer slump.
I was just going to talk to that. So a lot of what, a lot of what happens in the fall, these fall assessments are given in September. And with a lot of our students, we see that summer slide where we all regress over the summer, right? Just to varying degrees. And it takes some kids, unfortunately, it takes some of our students who receive interventions all the way until January to get back to where they started. Not all, and that's not, that's, we don't like to see that. But it's rare to find no slide. Children who read a lot in the summer and children who have summer services, we see less of the slide. A typical child, you see them bounce back pretty quickly. Once they get into the groove, they're, they're back and they're making progress. But all things to take into consideration. Then this shows a comparison. Up at the top, you see the schools, we are school five. But this is a comparison of all the schools and then the SU data. And there, it's all percentages similar to the last slide. I'm, I'll show you a slide that kind of gives a summary of where we're at in comparison with the SU.
It wasn't in the package. Do we have, we must have, East Montpelier's year to year. So in other words, we know this, is that a bad question?
Oh my God.
It restarted somehow.
Oh, well, we've got it. Here, I'll ask a long question. I mean,
It's coming back now.
To me, it's, it's, it's interesting to see how we compare to the other schools in the district, but I'm most interested in how we compare to ourselves over time.
So we don't have, the data is not stable enough yet to start doing that for you.
And we're changing testing too?
We've changed in testings and assessments. It's coming, Alicia, it's just, it's flashing right now. So it's going to take a minute to come back to project. But yeah, it, the problem, and that's, we'd like to add that longitude. No, it's just the time of setting up the system and we wanted to make sure the assessments were stable. And we've been, some targets have changed, so then those percentages change and things like that.
I can say we have more of that data in reading. It's been more stable over time. We've used the FMP and the DRA2 for a few years at the same benchmark time. Math, we do not have that longitude.
It's okay. I mean, this is very, to me, this is very good, very useful data. So it's
Something happened.
Something happened with the ball.
Something would happen with the ball.
Our Ellen is going to be thrilled tomorrow. Anything else on this?
It's coming back though.
Again, it's more comprehensive, but I mean, because I had this to hand out today on the income gap, it would be good to see
Disaggregating.
broken down for East Montpelier by the income gap.
Yep. So one of the things we're trying, we're talking with, and this is where you need to talk to your school quality person, is the amount of data and the overwhelm. There's been a lot of talk in the school quality committee about how much the October was overwhelming. So we're taking a small snapshot here that we try to give you an annual full deep dive, but not that every time. So we, it's done, it's done in-house. I mean, these guys are analyzing. Alicia was just showing me some data, the level of analysis that she, the team's doing around here.
I love the quality.
Well, I mean, we're, so from a business perspective in ROI, we're spending a lot of money on tier two. So for that investment, I would expect to see
What is that?
that our gap is getting smaller.
Right.
So I, it's, whether it's in this presentation or with tier two stuff, I would be encouraged, I strongly suspect we're influencing the gap. And it's not all in one area where we're making the improvement. But I mean, we want to see that.
Right. But where I'm going to push back on Stephen is, and maybe this is time we should parking lot, we should parking lot this discussion till we get to school quality. Because I'm going to talk about, we need to be doing this across the schools the same. And I'll get into a lot more about that.
Okay.
We have some of that data that you presented in the October meeting that showed
You saw our fall.
We saw that whole, which we don't want to stop seeing. So to me is that
But that's where, let's
Hold on. So that is that, that relationship. I'm glad, I went to the 232 board meeting and I'm glad to know that it's live because I was totally guessing which school it is and because we didn't say numbers and I was just hoping. But I, but I didn't know. But Bill is right. We've been talking about what, how much data we really want. But not just because of what you're saying, but also because we don't have time to then talk about it after. Like we're presenting, I know a lot of, a lot of data, but we don't have the time. So we have also, we experimented ourselves actually in the Stanford domains. Had to take, make them a little more time. He, we talked about maybe creating different, we haven't decided, but creating different groups within the board. So we're working across the boards in, you know, you focus on this, you focus on that, you focus on that, so that we can actually understand the data. Because one thing is just we presented the data, but then we are not telling them exactly what it is. So we're not doing a good job monitoring, right? Because we just like, we see the data and then we have very little time to understand it and basically whatever, whatever that is. But we're meeting on Thursday, so we'll know, we'll know more. But I also hope that where you're sitting, you know, like we all are going to be working at different levels because we're at different places at, at schools. But we're not going to put weights on one school to get another school to catch up, right? We're going to all keep waiting together.
We may, we may. That's why I'm saying you should have this discussion. You should have this, I'm pushing the SU work floor.
And I want the SU work, but like in any team or any team sport. You don't put weights on your fastest runner to, you use them as a team, right? To
Bring everybody.
Bring everybody up, you know, so, but that's, that's just my personal.
I'll wait till school quality.
Okay. I hear, I hear what you're asking for a second. And do know that those are the conversations we have with our data teams when we talk about kids and we look at our data wall and we, we do disaggregate that. And that's how we identify kids in need of whatever kinds of interventions. And we progress monitor, are they make, are we closing the gap? Are they making those, the growth in each of these areas? I'm going to talk a little bit when I get to the last slide about what's coming up with that. But I'll keep going. So here's our math data. And again, it's benchmarks. So this is where students should be at the beginning of each grade level. No kindergarten in this data. This is all grades one through six using the STAR 360. So 49% of our students in the fall were levels three or four proficient or proficient with distinction on that benchmark assessment. And 51% were levels one and two were not. And then looking again at winter, so this is a different benchmark than it was in the fall. But our 53% of our students were proficient or proficient with distinction. So they got reached over the 50% line, but not by very much. And 47% were not. And if you look at, and the numbers are so small, but if you look at the change over time again, you hope to see pluses in the levels three and four. And the numbers decreasing in levels one and two. And it's kind of a little bit all over the place.
Well, we have a lot of kids in level one. So getting from a level one to a level three is a long way to go.
But one went down two levels?
Yeah, I'm not concerned about one of level four going down by 1%. I mean, if you've got, if you've got two or three kids
Two kids had a not so
if you just got a couple of kids that were right on the borderline in the fall.
And it's just one little snapshot?
It is one snapshot, but I think the important thing to note on this is that our growth is not the same as what we're seeing in reading.
Right.
That is my takeaway.
Okay.
And that's been a consistent difference.
Like that's been a perennial struggle.
Yes.
So when you, when you see that math, the fall math data before you are able to see the rest, what does, how do you, if it tells you that level one, you're at 16%, or at level two, you're 35%, how does that affect what you do for two, one, two, three?
The interventions? Yeah. So that's something Bill and I were talking about just a few minutes ago. The good news is if you go back to the reading, lower percentages, right, of students who are at levels one and two over the year than in math, our interventions are mostly happening in math right now across all grades. The struggle that we have, and this is, I'll, it's kind of skipping ahead, but I'll talk about it right now. So what we have found with reteach interventions is we have 30 minutes a day. But if you have a child who's a level one or a two in reading and a level one or a two in math and you have one block of time identified, it's really tricky to meet their need. It's kind of like, all right, half the year do they get one and the other half the year the other? How do you prioritize? It becomes really hard. So looking ahead to next year and what made it especially hard this year is our two interventionists, the time that they had to provide interventions had been cut so much, which we looked at in the winter. And you, like Stephen, were just talking about, you have, you, we're increasing interventions next year as a result. So when we did the master schedule for next year, we have intervention blocks, but we also have push-in blocks. So that if a child struggles in both areas, which happens often, they, it's not an either or, they're going to get it in both areas. So they may get a push-in intervention during literacy and a reteach intervention during math or vice versa. But we can't, we've learned the hard way. You can't pick and choose which is, which is the priority, math instruction or reading. It needs to be both so that these kids can rise in both areas. Does that make sense?
Yeah, can you tell me the differences between pushing and reteaching?
So an interventionist would go into the classroom during the literacy block and might provide interventions during the class time. Reteach is they all go to their own space and it's a block of time a day. And we've found the benefits of that time, but we also know it's not enough for, for these kids. For levels, level one, most of those kids are on IEPs, right? It's really the level, it's those yellow kids, the kids who are tier two who need that. They're not significantly below, but they're below enough that they're not meeting the standard.
And what math curriculum do you use? I should know that for a moment.
We are piloting, we don't.
I kind of thought that, but I wasn't sure.
So we're piloting three different programs next year. We have a cohort of six teachers from East Montpelier joining others across the supervisory union to pilot three different programs over the course of the year with the goal of identifying one. I'm very excited about that. And I think my teachers are too. I had a teacher representative, at least one from every grade level, asked to be on that pilot. They didn't all get in, but six of them did. So again, we are school number five and this is just a comparison, which I'll talk, I'll give a bit of a summary in just a few minutes. So the next few slides are around behavior. I, I shared behavior over this year and also behavior over the last three years because we haven't done this in a while, looked at behavioral data. This is just from August through last week. Problem behaviors from least to greatest. The greatest problem behavior is disruption, which may not come as any surprise. Physical aggression and defiance being the next two.
What's the difference between and disruption and disruption?
So there's a major. So there, there's disrupting class might be calling out, distracting others, getting up, sharpening your pencil, you know, getting others off task. A major disruption might be throwing a chair across the room.
So what's the P-A-N-G-G?
Physical aggression.
Physical, okay. And not the upchair. Is there a major physical dress disruption versus regular?
No. So physical aggression here means on the playground, you know, wrestling, not taking your hands off somebody, tackling somebody at football when you're, you know. Our rule, our school rule is kafudi, keep hands, feet and other objects to yourself. Some of our children have a hard time with doing that. It could be, could be kids aggressing towards adults, you know, kicking, hitting. And by time, again, you see the huge spike. That's lunch and recess. And it, we know that it's our, during the school day, the least controlled environment. And when most of the behaviors occur because you're mixing all kids from all different grades and all different classes. And then this is the three years data, just looking at months. We have a few things to celebrate. Orange is this year, green was two years ago, blue was last year. You all know, because I let you know quite often, in the fall, we had some really tricky kids that we were just learning, just meeting, trying to get a handle on, getting support someplace for, needing to hire personnel for huge spike in August and September, greater than in any other year. October through March, April data is not all in, so it really isn't as good as it looks. But I think it's probably decent. But I, from October, at least through the end of March, we got a handle on the behaviors. Supports are put in place for kids. And the celebration to me in this slide is that a significant decrease in behavior by month over the last three years.
And are all those kids still here and you just, you have the
Supports in place. So it might, it might mean a tier two plan, a check-in, check-out behavior plan. It might mean personnel. It might mean just a shift in expectations in classroom. It might mean Michael going in and coaching a teacher on how to set up the environment differently to meet kids' needs. It's a whole slew of things. And then also looking at the last three years worth of data, classroom, and there's a couple of reasons for this, I think, but classroom by and large has the most. So this is all in office discipline referral sheets, ODR sheets. Classroom teachers fill them out. Not, and we talked about this actually last week at our staff meeting. Teachers were starting to complain that kids were having hallway behaviors during lunch and recess. And I shared this with them last week at our staff meeting. And I said, so it doesn't look like it from our data. So that means teachers are not referring kids. When if somebody's running in the hallway, we don't know about it, so we're not doing anything to fix it. So rather than complaining about it, fill out the form, let us address the behavior so we can get a handle on it. But by and large, and that's where that disruption comes from too. That's, that's our, teachers are, are working on that in the classroom.
So that might reflect my question then. If I looked two slides back for referrals by time and you did say it was mostly lunch and recess. And then you look at referrals by location. It was hard for me to square why classroom was so much higher than everywhere else. And it's because it's not, or is it just that there's so many classroom opportunities?
So many other times. That's one hour of the day, which is the trickiest hour of the day. But all those other times are classroom?
Familitively, it just
Yes. So with some successes, our scores are going up in both math and literacy over the course of the year. And Stephen, I know it doesn't tease out our tiered students and those who receive interventions, but looking at a snapshot of the whole school, we're moving in the right direction. The increase, and again, it's benchmarks, so these numbers are not exact, but we're making solid gains in reading, small gains in math.
Well, I don't, I mean, you're saying small gains, but there was a significant improvement from level one to level two too. So that's a gain where there
There's still not where they need to be, but they are.
It's still a gain.
That our students made the most growth of any school, looking at our reading data. That's a celebration. And overall, our behavior data is getting better. The systems are working. Possible improvements, our math data is showing, as I said, we're not making the same progress. And comparing our math data with the five other schools, we're kind of right in the middle. We didn't make the greatest growth, but we didn't make the least. We're kind of, we're right in the middle. And looking at our behavioral data, we need to continue working on disruptive behaviors in the classroom. And then finally, board supports. And this is just, I feel like what we have is working and we're constantly tweaking. Like I talked about the interventions and the reteach block versus next year, looking to do it differently and having more times for interventions, but just continued support around the coaching to increase teacher capacity, especially with tier one. And then continued support around tiers two and three for those who need it. Any final thoughts or questions? So this is really holistic. This is just school-wide snapshot. And so I heard from some of you that you appreciate more of the fall monitoring that has really a ton of data. How did, and this is new, we have not done this. How did this, do you feel like you have a picture?
Yeah.
I do.
Yeah.
I think it is good when you can disaggregate it, but we could do that with SBUCK data pretty easily when it comes in, which is another snapshot to see
Yeah.
a different system, but it's going to give us reading and math, literacy and math.
One thing that I was showing Bill just before we met, or before we came in. So some of our SBUCK data is already here, which is exciting. And what you saw from this, the results from the STAR 360, there is something there is something, there's a way to look at that that kind of projects how they think a student will do in the, in the S P A C. And so we did a comparison for those results that are in, and it is so closely aligned, which was exciting because it's not been in the past. So I feel like that will, that will be helpful to us. All right, thank you. I'm glad this came back. I'm gonna pass this around, I totally forgot.
Okay. So three point two board observations.
Maybe I can start a little bit, I wish I had stayed last time. One, main reasons for the kids. I think I could have given you a little more support that I hadn't communicated, debriefed with Jen and Alicia afterwards. And there were questions about the form and the usage of it. One of the things that's been found and I is that most people are not using the form while the kids are performing. It's taking time afterwards and really in silence and filling it out afterwards.
I think that was one of our reflections.
Right, so I want.
It's very hard to watch.
Right, you can't, you can't do it, you can't do it. And that's actually a qualitative research or data gathering, that's totally allowable. Is to say, I'm gonna immerse myself in it, you're a participant, you do that, and then right afterwards you stop and you write down what you can remember and, and put that down. It's gonna be a trend that I think is gonna give you some more pieces of that. But I thought, one of the things that came back was, why does the board participate in observations? And that needed to be talked about, why do you want to do that?
Why do we want to?
Why, why do you, why do you want to do that? I mean, why, why is that, is it important to you to do that for monitoring or is it important just to see what the kids do? I mean, that's what you need to decide. I'm not trying to say it's an or, as in an or one's better than the other, but you need to decide what your purpose is of that, and I think that's a step missed in this piece.
Yeah.
I think we talked about it, yeah.
My reflections is that we didn't have a clear, we didn't have a clear idea of that question.
Right.
So on top of trying to do it real time, we found there was a drift because we were trying to do something that we didn't have a direct purpose for.
And I think that's part of the piece of just what we got into sidetracked during Alicia's, why do you monitor? You need to be able to answer both of those questions and to know what depth monitoring needs to occur. So.
I also think seeing something like that, it's almost like getting a finished piece in writing that's already been typed. All the work that went into it, when you're putting down proficient or not proficient or whatever, we were watching them do a wonderful presentation. But I'm not comfortable saying that they're proficient in whatever.
We weren't, we weren't asking that, we were asking, did you see that they had a chance to learn in that area? Not whether they're proficient. It's, and Lindy, I think for you it might be the hardest because you're teaching every day and say, I gotta take myself out of that teacher mode and stop assessing their performance level.
And I, I just was not sure if that's the role of the board.
And that's a question for you guys to talk about.
Right, the role of the board, I mean, in my opinion, I love seeing what's going on in the schools because I don't get in here every day, my kids aren't here anymore. So that was their displays over there, all of that was very informative as to what's going on on a day-to-day basis in the school. But as far as a board observation type, if I come for open house or something like that, just going around seeing what's going on is, and if I have a concern, then maybe I bring it up, but I don't know.
So maybe the question is more, there's, I think we all feel that there was value in that presentation. The question is, was it, was it a good opportunity for observation of the learning in the school? Of the opportunities for learning in the school? And if, I mean, that sort of goes back to, I'm a layperson, I have no window into education, like I know more acronym soup than probably the average taxpayer does, but but I'm, you know, I'm not qualified to make, I feel, any sort of judgment of even, I'm not even comfortable necessarily with saying, yes, the opportunity for this learning existed. And I think it sort of goes back to, like, we, we give, we hear feedback about what you guys need from the professional educator perspective. And we empower you to deliver education as professionals because we're not. And so I think the last piece for us is, you know, sort of like to prove it, like.
I think that presentation.
And I think this has way more value in terms of a data-driven approach that says, you know, our education dollars. But right, I mean, that sort of goes back to the fundamental question of, of monitoring, right? We're the fiscal and really broad strokes stewards of what happens in the building. So yeah, I, I don't have a clear answer. Other than I, I felt like that presentation had great value, I just don't know exactly how to quantify what that value was.
Yeah.
I found the form difficult.
Yeah, I definitely found the form difficult. What I found enjoyable is the broad, the broadness of the presentations and that the kids found a subject matter that they could be passionate about and take and run with it, which I think everyone learns better in an environment that they can be passionate about the subject. So I think from, that's what was valuable, you know.
Yeah.
A little bit more valuable to me than.
We talked a lot about, which I remember, I don't have my, I have the, the monitor stuff, but I don't have my notes of that meeting, but we did. I thought, I thought that what we had said is that what was valuable was that we were able to, if a parent approached you on the street, like, like we, we actually had some connection with the kids. To me, I agree with you that we're supposed to monitor from further up, but the further away that we are from the success or the, or seeing the actual kids and not just the numbers, it's.
The less of a story we have to tell.
Yeah, it's the, we, we're not, to me, we're not as connected. So I, I'm not as worried about like, you know, how qualified I am to say that, because I, I'm not expecting this to be used to, to monitor a teacher or to say that a teacher is, it's more about, to me, in the big picture. It was so amazing to see the energy, how much time they could spend there, the way to speak to us, you know, not just to us, but to present themselves. You know, and the use of technology and helping each other when the technology was not working. So, so to see what we're learning today, but in actual, you know, not in numbers, but in pictures. You know, to me, that was, that was valuable. I think we, we all agree that we needed a little bit more work as a, as a board in knowing this. But we've been talking also, that's what we said, we've been talking so much about student learning outcomes, right? We, we helped say what that was gonna be, we did all this work, and then this was like the perfect example. Like, I'm a learner visual, like, I can read all you want, but when somebody presents something and like, oh yeah, that is totally transferable skill, you know, like, it connects those student learning outcomes in a way that you can talk to a parent too. So we're not talking educational jargon, but
Right.
this is what I meant, but it's just my take on it. So it was, you know, we don't need to do it at every board meeting, but it's, to me, it's important.
No, I, again, I think we all, I think we all see the value. I think what, what we're wrestling with is how to quantify what it is that we're looking for in these observations so that, like, what I just heard you say is that, or maybe my interpretation of what you said, is that what we're looking for is a way to tell the story of what's going on in the building, right? And, and that's different than trying to get some, some data or some metrics, right? We're, we're not trying to measure specific metrics necessarily, or maybe we are, but I think that's the conversation that, that Bill is looking for. Why do we participate in observations? And I would key off of that and say, what is it that we want as an outcome of an observation, right? So that we can give them, I, I mean, give you no direction.
Right.
But you did a brilliant job.
Give it all to her.
But we, you know, but we're trying to hold ourselves to some standard that actually didn't, didn't mesh well with what was being shown.
But I see that monitoring student learning outcomes, is that why we're like trying to get a grasp on?
Well, yeah, the, one of the things you're gonna struggle with for a while until you, you
Do enough of it.
Frankly, do enough of it is, is to really know those student learning outcomes. And I think one of the best things that I can do to help board members is to be educated on what the student learning outcomes really are. And then what's it look like when a kid's presenting, whether it's below proficient or proficient with distinction, that whole gamut. You know, I'm not worried about you judging that, but to say, like, just the discussion I had right now. Hey, I, you know, you said Flor, I saw the transferable skills once they were being presented, now I can talk to those. That's the piece that I want every board member to be able to understand, those posters up there are just not nice posters, but they're driving everything we're doing. And when someone asks me on the street that hasn't anything, but I hear you guys are talking about we're measuring the school by student learning outcomes, or I hear that proficiency-based learning, that stuff's terrible. Well, let me tell you what that actually looks like. You know, that's the story that you want behind the numbers you just got from Alicia. Like Alicia, she just gave you a bunch of numbers, that's great, but numbers aren't everything. Story by itself is not everything, but combined, when you can tell the narrative of what the kids are doing and why we're measuring via these, those pieces. And now we have some data on it that backs up and tells us to make sure, and go right to Stephen's words, of the return on the investment, this is what we're seeing.
I think we could, I don't know, maybe we couldn't, but little five-minute videos occasionally of, I don't know, going in a classroom and talking to some students or just even seeing what the classrooms look like. How are the student learning outcomes, are they in the form of targets? Are they in the form of I can statements? Or how are students understanding what it is that goes from those posters to the classroom?
Yep.
And that could be done with photographs, just put into, you know, motion or a video. To me, that would save people having to be here, but it gives a picture. Like you said, the story, it may not be as
Polished.
Real as the children actually, well, I think one of the things Flor pointed out that I thought was, it was polished, but when something wasn't, how they came together to say, wait, I know how to fix that, or I can do that. And the collaborative nature of it came across.
Right, and all of those transferable skills.
Right. Versus getting up and having something that you've practiced in class for a week and.
Nothing goes wrong and.
Right.
Yeah.
It was, it was, I thought, good when things did go wrong a little bit, to see that collaboration and to see the kids step up. I mean, nothing went wrong really badly, it was just the PowerPoint would go south or something and they stepped right up.
I'm, so you're concerned with all the data that has to be shared. I'm concerned with all the learning that has to happen for board numbers. So I need to know student learning outcome by grade.
Well, no, I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that. I'm saying the student learning outcome itself, there's thirteen of them, and there's a definition.
So all, all, all our observation would be is to say, I saw these six demonstrated.
I saw, I saw, just the cooperation. That's in the interpersonal part of the transferable skill for that.
Self-guidance.
Creative problem.
I saw that.
Well, they're speaking.
Literacy.
I'm not, I'm not asking you to learn, no, that's why we had, we paid professionals to do that, to know that. I'm asking you to be able to say, those thirteen that we said yes to on Mace two thousand sixteen, I get that. I don't get much below that, but I get what those thirteen are. And I can tell you what each, I can tell you, if you ask me what mathematical is, I, you know, we expect them to be proficient in their math, not only procedural math, but to conceptually understand it, and that's what the standard says.
But, but I think that's part of what you're hearing from Ruben, we can't tell you the profession, proficiency. We can just say we observed.
Right, right, that's all, that's all I'm asking for. It was evidence they had a chance to show their level. That's all I'm asking, and not, I'm not asking for you to judge the level.
Just that we observed that outcome.
Yeah.
Because you, so thinking about those students, there was a range of ability of those students. You probably saw it in their speaking and you probably saw it in some of their, right, what they created. They, they're, so you don't need to determine what is proficient, but was there, did each of those children show evidence of learning in one of those areas?
So the thing that keeps going around in my head is I think we have four or five forms, and so, because this is what I do.
We just have one.
Looked at each of the presentations in a vacuum, right? And so frankly, I think a lot of my discomfort of it, with, with it, came out of misusing the forms and just not understanding. I'm, I'm actually, I think I'm going to steal a few minutes and find the kid's presentation with one form, and I'm gonna give the form another shot, just for my own personal learning. Because I think that I will come away with a different reflection doing it the way that you suggested, where you'd sort of watch the whole thing and it'll trigger the memories of talking to the kids and all of that. And then just taking five minutes to, you know, do one form for the whole group and the whole experience. And I have a sneaky feeling that I'll be more, more comfortable with the form in that, in that format.
Right, I mean, they, I've seen the form used with one student, and I've seen it, as you did here, this was probably the most I've ever seen. No, I shouldn't say it, because Kari did it with the middle school, with a middle school presentation for every middle schooler going one time when he was down there and a couple other board, I should remember Kari, there were a couple other board members down there during the middle of the day. But I mean, the whole team was going, so, on presentations. But I think it's, I think it's harder the more students you have. But the idea is it's holistic.
Right.
It's not, it's holistic. You can't break it into its parts, yeah.
Yeah.
It wasn't about your diary.
Just a summation of what did you see?
Right.
Yeah. And I, I think what I liked was the, that differentiation of, you could see the kids were at different levels and their comfort of, you know, the comfort of explaining or.
Some didn't speak at all, some only had something, right, and they were backup support in other ways.
Yeah, yeah, and how passionate some of them were, like, you know, like my son doesn't like to write too much, but he was writing about football helmets, so he was like writing away.
Well, his presentation was amazing.
And he's just like totally into it.
And his confidence.
He, he loved, he loves talking sports, so you can, any data, any, like, he will just tell you. But it was like, you know, like, it was exciting to see him so excited about school, right? So as a parent, it was just like, and, and Isaac, you know, Ryan, you know, like, his, all of them were just so, so excited about school, that was what, and you don't get to see that always, right? As a board member, unless you're here, you know, alone.
Or as a parent. Their entire day doesn't look quite that exciting to them, right, in his straight eyes.
So when they come home, you say, so what'd you do at school today? Nothing. Best part, recess.
But you had evidence, right, that, that they, that there was learning that was going on. And I think that was my hope, and when I met with Mrs. Shed and said, she said, sure, we'll take this on, and I said, you know, I don't want it to be just one thing, because I want the board to be able to see a range of what are they learning this year? And, and I hope that you saw, you know, it was a little bit of everything.
How's the administration gonna use our feedback?
So we, the board, none of the boards have gotten to the point where they've been able to give us feedback. Because it's frankly really hard to make, to keep pulling, to keep having these. I would like to have the feedback, just a, part of it for me, the reason to have board observation is more for you to have the narrative and less about you giving us feedback.
Well, if there had been concern.
Right, right, that I would definitely, definitely I would take that, like, hey.
Well, see, for me, I, I cannot say that there was demonstrated learning, because I don't know where they were to begin with. These students could have been able to do this in the first week of school.
Right.
I don't know. All I can say is, these students demonstrated transferable skills.
The ability to.
But here's, there's a key word in here.
There was an opportunity for learning. We don't, we don't, I agree, we can't and aren't able to assess whether they learned. And I, I think that's where we keep getting hung up a little bit. Is that we're just looking to see if there was an opportunity in the project that led to the presentation to learn. Not to what degree the kids learned or anything else, but, you know, maybe taking it a step farther. Was there an opportunity to learn and was there room in that opportunity for, for these particular either. Non-transferable or transferable skills to be brought to bear in this project? Right, so there was obviously, there was a transferable skill of cooperative teamwork when things went wrong, right? So we could check that box off and say, yes, there was, there was clearly an opportunity for, for that in that moment. And, you know, looking at, looking at the. The football one is the one that's coming to mind because it's been talked about. Was there an opportunity for, you know, going into a subject or a topic and learning something about it? Not, you know, did he know it all coming in, but was there an opportunity to go deeper on that and learn something?
Wait, maybe I can help you a little bit there, Ruben, there might have been something where he learned. I, I didn't see the presentation, so I'm way out in left field. So let's forget about the transferable skills. What content knowledge was there opportunity to learn from what you saw presented? You obviously saw some speaking skills, so there's probably an opportunity there. So we can go into the language arts and literacy. Did you, I mean, I don't know if there, if there wasn't any social sciences.
But there was, right, right, there was evidence of right.
And the one that they're referring to, the student had to have a lot of technical, statistical information. On the cause of concussions when you're hit repeatedly, so there had to be some math and some data and.
There was some data analytics going through and probably stumbling over some bad data. Or at least one could assume that that.
But I'm trying to find one, there's a, there are some content areas and there are probably some transferable skills that weren't there. And what you wanna do as a board, at least, and this is one thing U thirty-two did do after its first year, it hasn't done it since. And they're in year three of this, is they looked through them all and they said, do we see evidence of all the difference transferable, of all the, at that point it was core values and beliefs, because it was before two thousand sixteen. And there was actually a couple of this, we didn't, and so they looked at Stephen and I said, did you bring us some presentations that do? And, you know, it was that piece of, are you assured as a board that the learning opportunities for the student learning outcomes are there? And do you feel like that they are for all kids and that narrative story? It, you know, I think, you know, when you ask the feedback, Stephen, for me, that's the big piece. I can, I can work, and Alicia can work with the professionals around here to say, let's assess the performance and how are we growing? And the, and your student learning growth is the number piece, the quantitative pieces that you're getting reports on. But you wanna be assured as a board, because you ask us this all the time, we're building a budget, do we have everything we need so the instruction concur? And how do I know that those opportunities are being presented?
Yeah, Stephen, I was gonna go back to your question about like what, how will we use your feedback and, and what feedback? And I guess for me, it's less about, because this is your first opportunity, so I'm not gonna take a lot from this. But what I'll take from it is what can I show you next time that will show you different evidence, right? So you saw this, what else can I show you to show you other transferable skills or different grade levels? Or, you know, in action in other ways, maybe not in a classroom setting, but somewhere else, um, and looking at. So as I'm thinking about, and a question I have for you, would it be helpful to come back in June and, and have a little snippet? Obviously not students, but watch something that looks very different than what you saw last month to have another taste of. Here's totally different student learning outcomes in action.
Yeah, that'd be, yeah, that'd be great, and I was gonna.
Build it for these four.
No, but, but Stephen, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say that I would take it even a step further back, because, you know, we all have been in the board for, you know, way too many years. And we, we don't always get to see, we don't always get to see, and to me this, it sort of put into action everything, I think. Like, I know that our behavior is doing better, and seeing them interact, helping each other, or even keeping track. It was a pretty long presentation for all of them to stay still and, you know, be engaged. They, and then they didn't really need to present, they, they, they were given a choice to present, it was not like they had this, like, there were more kids that wanted to present that spoke a lot. So as, as far as taking, it was a snippet on time for this particular child that some of them, some of us knew from, from before. There were several of them that, like I felt I knew from before and how they have grown, to me that was different. But even if it's just this minute in time right now, it's important to know that they are capable of doing this much. You know, it just shows you where they are right now, I don't know how to explain it. That, you know, like as, as a child, they're doing well, you know, like it's a well-rounded.
Stephen, are you, do you not think we shouldn't be doing these board observations? I can't get a read from you just.
No, I, I'm not, I'm not against it, I just, it's not far enough down the evolutionary process for me. I, I mean, as a general statement, I don't care about learning opportunities, I care about results. I, I don't care, my assumption is students get learning opportunities. I'm not concerned about that, I want students that can read and write and perform math. I don't care how many opportunities they had, right? I mean, that's why we've gone to tier two instruction, because they need more opportunities. It's not about that they had it. I, I, I'm sure we're in agreement that our school provides learning opportunities, but I could be wrong. So that's where we could be. But to me, it totally reframes how I do an evaluation. Maybe the evaluation isn't what I see, maybe it's what I don't see. I didn't see any of these things. So then for the adminis, well, it doesn't matter which way.
Well, you can go either way.
No, but that, that would give me the same impression.
But if, if Alicia and Bill were like, boy, math skills are awesome on this presentation. And none of us say we saw anything on math skills, then there's a, it's a disconnect, there's no alignment. But it, it could go, it could.
But I think even just having those conversations is helpful for all of us, right? Like, what did you see, what did we think was there, what, and, okay, so next time we need to show evidence of, so that you can. I think for me, the goal of these are so that you can see live and in action, because next year, only two of you are gonna have children in this school. That's not very many, right, on a board, so most of you are not gonna see these opportunities in the day to day. Um, or week to week, or, you know, how often you're here. So for me, it's to show you evidence that this is what it looks like in action. Whether it's in a math class, or it's coming to speak to you, or it's out on the playground.
And I think there's a lot of value there, it's just a different value than what we thought we were trying to do with this form.
And I think the data is also a way to get that information.
And so pivoting off of what you said, I think it, and actually sort of stealing Stephen's point. I'm not interested in seeing what I don't see. What I'm more interested in is you, as the professionals, will have an expectation of what you think is being demonstrated. And if there's a delta between what you think is being demonstrated and what we saw. Because that will be more informative, I think, I think. Than, than us either, you know, looking really specifically for things or, or looking for the absence of things. I'm not gonna catch the absence of anything. It's just not how I work. So I, yeah, I don't feel like I've talked too much about this, so.
Well, no, understanding how it can be used makes it valuable to me.
To me, it's.
I think we'll get there.
My, my biggest piece is, is education for the board, less about that you know. It's a way you'll get to understand those aspects of it.
I think we have all, we're all getting to that being the primary value. I, I didn't go into this observation with that being the primary.
No, I know that.
And I, I think it's okay to, I, I think it's positive, I think this, this conversation is positive. Because there is very strong value in being able to communicate to folks who aren't in the school every day, what's going on.
Well, then I gotta push back against that. I, I don't think board members should be saying, I think board members can say, I've seen the student learning outcomes demonstrated. But, and that's why I said I would have to understand grade level, proficient and not proficient and all that. I can't say that the school's doing a good job or not a good job. I can't say if any of those students were proficient or not proficient. I can't, and, and I don't think, board members should be saying that. If a parent comes and said, you know, was my student proficient in that presentation? The answer should be no, talk to the teacher.
Right.
No idea.
Yes.
I think we can utilize, I think we can infer between what we see and the numbers. Like if we use the numbers with what we're seeing, we can say that whether they're doing a good job or not. Cause if we're seeing the improvements in the numbers and we're seeing.
Right, all the fielding presentations in the world don't help if the numbers are not going in the right direction.
Yeah, and I, I think for us, it's a little bit harder to judge any of the core knowledge part, because we, that's not what we're doing. But, you know, to see some of the transfer skills, I don't think we'd be crossing any, you know, saying anything terrible today. In, in the period where we're trying to engage our community, saying, you know, like I, I saw really motivated kids, you know, like I saw engaged students, like so. Good behavior or, you know, like.
Effective communication.
Effective communication, like I just saw them that have self-direction, self-awareness. Even, I don't, I think those were things that as human beings, that are working in the big world, we, we can, we can see. And people are gonna see it in Orca too. So, so overall is, I think it's good engagement to school, but I, I agree with you that we don't, I don't wanna be saying, oh, I know that. All of the student learning outcomes are being effectively, I, 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 that's not my, my area of expertise. But, but I do wanna know, I do wanna support those student learning outcomes, so the more that I know about those student learning outcomes. I feel the same way that with the multi-tier system of supports, right? At the beginning, it was kind of like weird, and not weird, but like trying to understand it, the more that we understood how it worked and everything, the better that we can support it as a board.
That's your, I just wanna see the results.
Tease down.
Doesn't matter how well intentioned and how enthusiastic and how well people work together, if, if they're not improving.
Yeah.
Then we gotta find it, I'm not saying we don't need to invest, we need to find a different way. And I think, what I'm seeing is it's working, so don't get me wrong. But to me, that's what, that's what we're here for. But I, 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 I think we continue to work on it and refine it, and I think it's gonna be valuable. I just wanna encourage us not to, not to become evaluators and.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think we wanna be.
I don't think you have anyone, at least for me, I'm, I'm gonna get. That's one thing I've been really trying to say with all this work and worked with Calis and U thirty-two about is, you are not evaluating. You, you need a credential to do that.
Yeah.
You need an endorsement.
Yeah.
A Vermont license endorsement to do that.
Okay.
Okay. You good? Did you guys get what you need?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. We're onto board goals.
No, we're gonna move the, we're gonna move what, the little arrow that I made, so we're gonna start with executive committee up there.
Well, it's exactly the same thing.
It's the same thing, but yeah.
So virtually, a vast majority of our executive committee meeting were on these. Board goals, cause if you go, go back and Bill correct, or anyone can correct me if I'm remembering it wrong. But at the last full board meeting, these were the three areas that seemed clearly to be the ones of most interest. And it was decided then that Matthew and maybe one other person were gonna take an opportunity to kind of refine those goals. And then it was presented at the executive committee meeting on the twenty-fifth of April. And we talked through them. And what you see on pages four and five is what Matthew presented to the executive committee.
Refined after the executive committee and the school quality committee.
And the U thirty-two.
This has been refined?
Yeah, since it was presented at the executive committee and board two, goal two has been.
Oh, yeah, okay, I see the who's have been changed.
Since the school quality committee.
So. It's the three goals, rough, not rough, timelines have been established. More clarity around what the goal means and who is responsible for it. So the board governance, the discussion, and I think you can see it reflected in the notes and in the goal. It, it's not gonna be specific to policy governance, it's gonna be looking at. Alternative board operating practices of which policy governance is one. And then a timeline on it and the executive committee, and Matthew was gonna invite board chairs to also participate. Well, they're open meetings anyway, but specifically invite board chairs to participate in those discussions. So it would be looking at how we operate as boards. And is there a better way to operate? Is that a fair summary?
Yes.
And it's an executive committee responsibility. The second one was on board monitoring. The who was easy, at least from the executive committee perspective, cause there's already school quality committee. And at that last full board meeting, we made it an SU-wide committee, so they seem to have the expertise of, they're the who.
What was it before, as far as you said you made it an SU committee?
It was a U thirty-two school quality committee, but there were members like Florz always, there's been. The elementary schools were invited to participate and some did.
But it wasn't.
It, it wasn't, it was a U thirty-two committee. And it, it, it's transcended that, so it's.
So now there's a rep from every board?
There's an opportunity for a rep from every board, I don't know if every board is represented or not.
Yes, yeah, before I would actually say there was an opportunity for a rep from every board, but not all boards participated.
Yeah.
And since it's become an SU, someone's assigned it and there have been attendants.
So, I mean, I think this reflects kind of exactly around what we were talking about as far as student learning outcomes. And the timeline, and then, uh, community engagement. I don't wanna say we stumbled, there was less clarity around this goal, because it became, my interpretation is executive committee discussed it. And you can look at the notes, I mean, the minutes if you want. There was not good alignment, there wasn't good clarity on what constituted community engagement. So, for instance, does, is community engagement part of a board meeting? Is community engagement outside of open meeting law? You know, I think in basic terms, there was the two main. And it's not conflicting, differences of interpretation of community engagement was, for some people, it was. We want the community to answer questions for us. And for some, it was, we wanna provide opportunities for the community to get involved and, and. Discuss what, less structured and, and more, you know. You know, the school board is interested in multi-year budgeting. And then, you know, is, I'm making stuff up.
How like have a forum or something?
No, not a forum, just, there are people that are interested in that and wanna provide, get together and talk about it and provide some input. As compared to, we want some specific feedback on something, because those are different. So, and you'll see it in the timeline, that, that the first thing to do is, you know, exactly what do we mean by community engagement? What are we trying to do? So it's not that the executive committee is trying to push it in any direction, there was just lack of clarity. So it'll go back to the. So it'll go back to the full board to discuss and, you know, what do we wanna get out of it? What do, what do we mean by community engagement?
Could we use that tip that we got at the public agenda meeting?
That, that was discussed, you mean, in the SU?
Well, no, she, you remember when Nicole presented the, so the open meeting law at the end, you know, to explain the difference. She, I, I thought this was really helpful about exactly what you were saying, the two different, how important both are, but how different they are. And then we can decide where do we wanna concentrate, and I think we wanna concentrate in.
Well, we don't know where we wanna concentrate.
So I think there's, there's a few, three people.
Yeah.
That, three or four people have had some training with Matt, because some went last, this spring, almost a year ago, to one of his workshops over in Lindenville.
Yeah.
But I think what I'm reading and where Matthew has gotten to, and he knows with Nicole that was up with, not Nicole Mace, but the other presenter with.
Nicole, Nicole Cabra.
Yeah, and she and Matt have been colleagues before.
Yeah.
And so, one of the things that Matthew was talking about is investigating right now is that's our retreat. Is to get people to come together and say, let's figure out what we mean by engagement. But we all need to go through the same training.
Yeah.
To have that discussion before, we're just having a few. So I think, I know on the thirtieth, Matthew will bring a lot more details because there's already been enough people. We have fourteen, and that was as of last Wednesday, that said, yes, we can make a meeting on the second of Oc- of August. So he's like, I think, he asked me what I thought, and I said, I was in agreement, let's go forward, let's start moving for an SU-wide retreat.
So.
To look at.
Goal three is still evolving, whereas goal one and two, I think, are a little more, there's more clarity on what's going on.
Okay.
So that's three, three, and four, three, if you have any questions.
And I gave you a little bit of the update on the retreat as of Wednesday, that's, I haven't talked to Matthew, I'll talk with him tomorrow morning. He and I are meeting to work on the executive committee, we haven't talked since Wednesday of last week. But he, and that's why, if, if you didn't respond to the doodle poll.
I did.
He sent people an individual email saying, I'd like to know.
I didn't technically respond to the doodle poll, but I emailed him.
So that works, he's doing it either way right now, but he, he was trying to get back to, he only had three people that, three people that said no, and one of them actually changed when it started to hear that number, so.
Well, I said no.
And that's okay, that's what happens.
It's our retreat where I work.
Maybe any other thing from the executive committee I'll highlight, it's two, four, if you're looking on page thirty-one. We did have a discussion of the hiring process for special ed, and that's the, I specifically said we were gonna be talking about that and brought our feedback, so.
What page was that? What page did you say?
Page thirty-one, two point four, hiring process for social education stat. All the boards are in alignment except for one. One board still wants to interview candidates as a board and make the selection themselves.
The board interview candidates.
And selects.
I only take the ones, I, I don't listen to that.
I know. But it was, it was interesting, the, and you can see it from some of the notes, the, the, the discussion for the boards that don't do that.
Yeah, I see it.
We're surprised board members would think they'd be better suited to hire someone.
I feel like we pay some big bucks to some administrators, so.
That's the feeling in all, all, all schools except that. But it used to be, that used to be the policy all around, that's how we used to, we used to interview.
But, but there was always a committee before an interview at the very end, there were the two people would come.
But I think SU-wide, I'm talking many years ago, I think that was more standard practice.
Two thousand and eleven is when the statute changed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't remember us interviewing the only.
Anyway.
The committee brought somebody to you, even when I was hired twenty-something years ago here.
I think the executive committee and the administrators heard that East Montpelier is satisfied with the process.
You think?
Do you guys, did you hear that?
I heard that.
Yeah, I hear that.
Good.
With a little caveat, but I heard that.
Oh, did I have a caveat?
Yeah, your caveat, as long as it stays the way it is.
Well, yeah. I can't agree with policy that doesn't, I'm honing my negotiation skills, Bill.
Bill, you were saying, you shared a little bit about the retreat, I mean, you don't need to say, you can't right now, but I thought the retreat was still gonna be both things?
Both, I, I don't know.
The trauma and the.
Yeah, I just don't know that we can get it all done. Because we need a full day of.
One or the other.
One or the other. You can't, I mean, you will do disservice to both.
Okay.
But maybe there's an opportunity to do one one day and one another time, I mean, they both need to happen.
So here's, here's what's happening, I'm already watching it, and it's gonna get worse this year because we've got three things that are coming up and a lot of committee work that's gonna happen. We are down board members in other communities, so we can't fill, we're losing board members.
I, I just asked, thank God we're not to fill that spot.
Not, not on our, on our boards?
In Berlin, yeah.
So, we are down people and we're burning people out, and I have more and more people saying I can't do more, that are your fellow members. So, I hear you, Flor, it's, it's not, Flor, I, I hear you, I mean, I hear the importance of things. It's just, we can't do everything, and we have to decide what we want to do. And I think as a board, you should give input, if there's one way you feel strongly or another of those two topics. And you should give that input to either your executive committee member, or if Ruben can be there on the thirtieth, because that's where we're gonna start talking about this. And it, it's really, we, and it's the same thing I said to Alicia, we just had this conversation an hour ago. I was like, so tell me your priorities, because you can't do it all. You're gonna have, and it doesn't necessarily, we, we can't, that's, we have to realize we're in organizations that can't do it all.
I, I mean, it's one of those, I struggle with this, we won't do it all.
Right, we'll do nothing.
So we end up prioritizing by default. And so then we're not actually being intentional about the things that we're letting fall by. So the opportunity is to decide what things we're gonna let go, which is hard, because it means that we actually have to let something go. If that's, you know, but that's a healthier way, and in my, and I've been practicing this a lot.
To help you feel better, Ruben. I, 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 so, so my bias is to do the community engagement over the trauma. So if people feel differently, make sure I know that, if all four of you feel the opposite way, then that's what I'll advocate for to executive committee. But from the trauma point of view as a board member, to me, our tier-two and behavioral support, it doesn't demonstrate that I understand it, but it demonstrates that I accept that it's a problem and let's support it. I mean, I hope that comes across from the board.
Yes, absolutely.
So, for me, community engagement is way more important because, and so this isn't a slam, this is just an observation. There's nobody in the SU that seems to have a good handle on how to improve our community engagement. I mean, how long have we been spending this, and I don't wanna spend it anymore, I wanna do something.
And what is it? Because if there's an event here, this place is packed and the road's filled.
But that's not community engagement, that's school engagement, that's different.
I think what you were saying is if we have this retreat, it's to learn what as a board or as a board.
Right, I mean, and some people have asked for a primer, and I said, I can give you a primer, I written one this past year, my lit review. I'll talk to you about community engagement, what it is and what it isn't.
Yeah, and I, you know, I, I don't know, I attended like three or four, five, attended Lindenville, I attended like three of the commit, you know, I love community engagement, that's sort of what I always wanna get better at. We, it's, it's, you know, it's definitely complicated, and we need to do it both ways, knowing what might not come to us on June first. We don't know what's gonna happen, we're gonna need community engagement more than ever, depending on what they tell us that our alternative will be passed or not. So.
Let's put it here, anything, so many.
But, but you know, we'll go start to hear, we'll start to hear something, but, but at the, but at the same time, I feel like some of us are at least our board, because I don't, I, I know most of the other board members, but maybe not as, as well. I just feel like they, it's, it's hard for me to decide one, you know, one or, or the other, because the trauma educates you in a way that you're more aware, we are affecting kids left and right all the time, and grownups.
Can we do that?
And, 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 and grownups, and it's just like as, as something, as, as growth, as, as human beings, and understanding each other and how do we make decisions, it's, it's amazing, it's something that the state is really invested on. So it, it, I'm, I'm having a hard time, truthfully, deciding what, you know, we support our tier-two hundred. And, but I don't, I don't think that that's necessarily how we feel across all of the, all of the schools. I don't, I don't know that everybody really understands the depths of, of trauma, that's how I felt.
For me, wearing my school board hat, I think the community engagement pieces is a higher priority. Personally, I would really like to do the, the trauma and resilience work because of everything that you just said. But in terms of where it comes to bear in this very small microcosm of my world, I think the community engagement, for me, I would prioritize that. Even though personally, I'm more.
Yeah, and I, I agree. The limitations on the dates available for the SU retreat were based on administrators, right?
So every, all of us, to, all of us as a collective group, and for me personally, but that's true for most everyone, have something scheduled for every day except for the second of August, because I held three days for two days of administrator retreat. So I gave the administrators, because I had promised them they would have the other three days that week, I gave them the news last week. You don't have three days anymore, and now you have two.
I was just wondering if.
There was room for another day, so.
Another day, if we don't include the administrators, do we need to.
So here's what I, here's what I, here's what I heard.
Or do we need, or do you make sense to have you there?
I think, I'm just, I'm not even gonna qualify, I'm just gonna say, I think you have to have your administrative team there. Because something that Ruben and I are, have worked on together in another realm, this needs to be a together, a retreat is about togetherness.
I understand, I just, I, I agree, I, I, I'm leaning towards where Flor is, I think it's pretty important, and I'm, I would love to fit it in somewhere.
What the trauma part, the trauma, to me, no, go ahead, Alicia.
No, no.
To me, the, the place for trauma, this is to me, isn't it a board, it's at a community forum. It's less about board members knowing and more about community members knowing.
Community engagement.
But, you know, it's kind of ironic, because the, the, the trauma thing, the, the SU retreat started as a trauma thing. That's how we said that we wanted to have an SU retreat to do the trauma, we kind of spunked it from here. But we could have that at different school, I felt like we owed it to the, to the staff too, because everybody, like, as far as continuity, you know, like the, the staff hasn't had the community engagement, in this case, we would all have it together, but the staff has been working on the trauma and stuff. So I, I'm not trying to make it complicated, I just don't wanna like totally let it slip. So maybe there's other ways to, like, holding, we own the movie, and maybe we hold one night at Calis, one night at East Montpelier, one night at.
So I've, I've gotta say this, that movie works really well when you have skilled facilitation.
Yeah.
For that, and.
So I need to be talking about five or six?
It's one of those things where I actually think it's better as a community piece, I agree with Steven on that. And, you know, we've had folks that have done that with that movie, have facilitated that, we also have kids, high school kids, that are very skilled at facilitating the, the, the community circles and those discussions.
Could we do something where we, maybe it is, maybe it's an evening, and we invite the community and the board, and we have a facilitator, and we show it at U thirty-two or something, I just.
Yeah, yeah, and those are definitely things that can be done, I think it's, it's.
That way, that way it's done and it's facilitated, but it's not at all that.
So, but you.
Yeah, yeah, but.
It makes room for this other work that we also need to do, so I'll walk back my last, you know, maybe, maybe we don't have to.
Even more.
You know, to something.
Well, I, I, so that's where, this is what I'm getting confused about as your superintendent. You gave us student learning outcomes in a mission, you asked us to build an implementation plan, you've asked us to do some other things. We have some things that are coming in from regulation, we are about to hit negotiations, and we're about to hit, I can do whatever ones you want. But I'm gonna go right back where you were, Ruben, about I need prioritization from you as a board, and from the overall board. Because as we, the more that we, and I'm getting, you know, I'll tell you, we're right there with the racial ethnicity, I'm not saying it's, any of it's bad or good, I don't wanna put any qualifiers on it, I just wanted you to know that as we get, we only have so much personnel time and time in our day. And I'm not talking about me, I'm talking about everyone in the system. So as we put more things as tasks to be done or goals to be done, we dilute pieces. Because I'm gonna use my colleague to my left, she's got so many hours in her day, and she has a family, and she has to sleep at some point. And probably eat would be a good thing as well. But, you know, there, you can, I, and maybe this is stuck in me, but I just read a research paper last week about K-12 burnout for leaders. And one of the biggest things you can do is keep changing the targets or keep adding things to do.
Because I don't.
And it doesn't, it, it doesn't mean that trauma, a film, I'm not saying, I'm not picking on just the film, it's saying this because of the film. But the consistency in staying on target, that's why I stay really tight to the implementation plan as your superintendent, to say that piece. It doesn't mean we can't have a night for a film, that's not what I'm talking about. But I'm using it as a springboard of saying, we need to decide to stay on that, and I'm willing to switch, I'm willing to take that direction. So I just.
I guess I, from my perspective, that the, the movie has been pretty consistent. Like we've, from this board, I think we've been pretty consistent about saying we want to participate in that, so.
Right, I, I think you're right, I think the change has come not from this board.
Right.
Which is okay, because we're a member of the supervisor union board, so, but just, I think that's fair to.
Sorry.
Well, if I was gonna try to tie it together, this, and we'll use the trauma, we'll use the trauma movie. That if it's facilitated, it's useful, it's effective. To me, that's a community engagement. Doesn't have anything to do with schools, doesn't have, well, it, it doesn't have anything to do with school priorities. It doesn't have anything to do with what we would ask administrators to do, we wouldn't ask administrators to do anything. And it would be a community engagement where we would identify or, or provide an opportunity for interested community members to get engaged. You know, maybe the board's involvement would be, we'll pay for the film rental, I don't know if there's a cost, and we'll provide a list of qualified facilitators, and there you go, community group, run with it. And if you want a school building to have your meeting in, we can help you schedule time. But it's not something we're tasking people to do, it's something that we think is of value, and if the community agrees with us, then organically, there's a, a way to, we can provide resources and help, help make that opportunity come about. As compared to, we want this to be a priority in the SU.
Yeah, and, and I, I was just trying to support the priority at the SU, because I thought it was an SU priority, I thought that every staff member had seen it, and I thought that we need to do a better job at funding what is necessary for, you know, resources, but, but maybe I'm, I'm wrong, so.
But what you just said, the, the funding comes from the community, so. So going off of what Steven just said.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So doing it as.
That, that makes, makes a lot of sense to me.
Yeah.
To, to do it in a facilitated way.
I agree.
So that it has all of that value. And yes, maybe it's not a board meeting, so maybe people aren't compelled to come, but hopefully it will have value.
There were already people that wanted to come.
Come, right. And then, um, and then it broadens that engagement with the community. Because we're experiencing something together as community members on a board and we'll all walk away with.
And administrators, right? Because you understand that we need the participation from the administrators if we're gonna do this.
Right. So.
So what I wanted was that it doesn't fall off, you know, because I know we have to prioritize, so.
So I think.
But I feel better about what you've said right now, so it's not like it's just gonna disappear. No.
So I think for board work and for prioritization, we're not asking you to take point on this, right? I think we can, we either, the, this we or the larger district we can take point on it so that it's not something that you're spending a lot of time on. Uh, so that we can better focus on the community engagement piece in the retreat. And it is that, that's a change from what we had originally talked about.
True.
Right? Um, but.
But it'd be nice to have.
For me, I feel like it's actually a positive change. I think the impact of that, um, experience will be more if it's open to more folks.
And that is how many other schools have done it, in towns.
It just, I mean, we've had this conversation over and over and over again with taxpayers that are like, why? Right? I mean, when, when we hired you as a vice principal, what do you mean you need a vice principal? And round and round and round we went. So let's show people, let's give them an opportunity to learn what it is that's walking in the door that makes the job different today than it was ten, fifteen, twenty, or even two years ago, right? And, and much like, opportunistically pivot off into the, into the.
Community engagement.
Well, into the school start time. Much like what we're doing with the school start time, part of whatever, part of how we lead is to learn together. Instead of the school board saying, we know these things and you should just follow us because we know. There's an important, there's, there's a lot of value in learning together. Because then you've got, it's, it's an overused word, but it's a more authentic connection that you have with folks. And so then you can have a broader and more open or safer, however you wanna call it, discussion about whatever it is that we're talking about.
So I guess my, my only request would be that maybe, you know, Kelly would be involved at whatever school. It would be presented to make sure that we are doing the same around the communities, not completely the same, but.
We can discuss it at the executive committee level, but I, I don't agree with Bill all the time, but on this one I will. We, we can't just keep tasking administrators more and more and more things to do. I'm comfortable making this a board initiative. And as we learn how to engage our community better, then it, it can be more organic and more community. And it's, so the reason, and an alternative reason I'm harping on the community engagement is we've developed for the superintendent, a good evaluation system. We've done two evaluations, Bill's self-report of his evaluation, the administrator's report and the board report for two evaluations in a row have said the area that needs the most work is community engagement. So we're starting to move in a community engagement direction. And I would hate to see that, you know, it's like Bill said, but now we wanna do this and now we wanna do this. I mean, all, for me, this community engagement all comes together. We wanted to do this three years ago when Act forty-six came in. I mean, I, I've got a huge bias on this community engagement part.
Yeah.
And we don't, we don't, we do a bad job.
I'm not saying we don't wanna.
But it's a priority.
Yeah.
So maybe, maybe an ideal outcome from the retreat around community engagement would be a little direction for the full board for how to execute this presentation.
Okay.
As in a community engagement.
As a community engagement opportunity across the SU.
Well, you just need to under, and Flo's been to the train, it might not have anything to do with us.
Yeah, we might have just one representative.
I'm actually gonna say that what I'm learning community engagement, the best community engagement doesn't happen from a board.
It's more, like I said, the board part might be, hey, towns in Washington Central, we have access to this film. Many, some community members have seen it. Here's people you can talk to. We think it's really valuable. Or, or the people that have already seen it form a group, they come to us. Can we get that film? Can we get an audit, can we watch it in the U thirty-two auditorium and invite all the people in Washington Central? Sure. Okay. Steve Pate, you know, SDP, I think that's what the kids call them.
Yeah, that's what they call them.
You know, what days is the auditorium available? Okay, can you reserve this day? And yep, we'll get it. And, you know, there should be fifteen facilitators and group, here's places you can go to get facilitators. But that's how boards are involved, just peripherally.
Right. And I, I guess I wasn't trying to be prescriptive about how the board did that.
Okay.
Or, or even that I'm not trying to compel the, the board to do that as an outcome, but just to keep it sort of.
Yeah. Can I, can I, can I read this? Just, it's really quick. So the board should structure opportunities to receive input from the community on decisions the board needs to make. However, an effective community engagement system within a district requires the board to establish clear expectations of administrators to focus on engagement and to provide them with the resources to do so. It does not require the school board to organize, convene or attend all the engagement activities. While the board meetings can, can and should be structured in a way that allows the community input. Board meetings are not the best or the only vehicle for building strong partnerships with the community. So that's exactly what, what, what you were talking about. SX, Kim, so it's not like they, they have one or two representatives from the board that have been participating in this group, but they are not, she's not spinning all of the, all of the, all of, of the activities. But I, so, so it doesn't mean that the board doesn't have to be better at community engagement either. Because when we want them to make decisions, so it's, it's, it's both.
Well, that's going back to why we want part, this to be part of the retreat is because we don't know yet. You know.
I don't think anybody's, I don't think anybody's saying that we don't want the retreat to focus us. I just think what we're trying to say is we don't want.
That to fall off.
It to fall off.
That's all.
That's all I'm saying. I'm not, I'm not discounting that we should focus on community engagement. I'm just saying that from my perspective, I don't want it to fall off.
So what I would ask as a takeaway is it's fallen off as a goal. There are three goals. Those are what they are. It doesn't mean that it can't happen, but it's not a goal.
But it can fall under one of the goals.
Exactly.
It could.
Under the community.
Could, it could.
And that's what we're trying to say.
Yeah, it, it could, but I think that's all we can say at this point.
And we're asking for it to.
There can't be an assurance that it will.
Right.
But it could be brought up.
Okay.
Okay. Board calendar.
I didn't print mine in color, so it's useless. What it, that's okay. I've seen it.
No, that wasn't that color. That was, I thought this was the, uh, the work calendar that we had. Maybe we just wanted to table that until after. Let me say this about the board goals, because Steven, you, there were a couple of things you didn't say that should have, that kinda goes to the calendar. The, the hope is after the thirtieth that on the sixth, uh, and it's my hope along with Matthew's hope. I know I can speak for him tonight. You know he's not here, is that the, um, is that these goals, and you may wanna add one, I'm gonna stress the one, um, to goals, but will be adopted by all boards on June sixth. So that's where we're headed for.
That's true.
And then the calendar that's in here, um, if it's black and white, it'll be hard for you to tell.
April, May, June?
The April, May, June and the all of next year, um, has, sorry, I'm trying to flip to my page. It's further, okay. That, that was actually part of my administrative report to say, um, here are all the meetings so far except for negotiation and we may need a transportation one. So we're going back to what we did two years ago, but we're gonna start getting to places where even more meetings will be, will be in conflict with each other. And so.
So wouldn't they have a little square around them and then?
That means there's two already and there will probably be more of those, especially as we get into negotiations.
Steven.
I'm negotiating.
Yeah, Steven.
I went to the.
Did you go to your train?
School Board Association train. We're, we're the outlier in school board.
I know. And Joe is Joe. So, so these are the meetings, but I was thinking that this item on here was on here for the board calendar development of the work calendar for.
For us.
For East Memorial. I don't think it's in here.
No, I did send, I did send it to Krista, but I have a copy. I, I made one change to add because we, every, every year we follow in the same, in the same thing. I just put in the teacher appreciation week so that.
So you don't have to do it open?
Oh, did you know that she did something on your behalf?
Yes, I told him.
Seriously.
So, but Darcy brought some very special treats just the other week. I heard about.
That was on your behalf, not ours.
I, well, I put it, I put it in behalf of everybody, but I was talking to other board members and other area, you know, in Norway. And I've been having the privilege of being at other board meetings and, and they kind of have a budget for, for it. And it's, some of them are like really great, like this, in Norwich, they bring an ice cream truck around to all the, to all the schools. And just for, they time it, so it's just like at the teacher time, like, there's a lot of very creative things. And I, I personally.
They're all getting on the bus and the ice cream.
I know, I was gonna say, I know, I was like, how much does that cost you?
And they should do the, the, the circle around multiple times.
But I, I don't wanna be dragged, but I, I just added that into our calendar earlier so that we can all decide what, what, what that is. That's the only thing. I just feel.
Culture in Florida where I taught, they put on the marquee out in front of the school, teacher appreciation next week. Teachers enjoy gift certificates or gift cards. And I mean, truly baskets at your classroom of people bringing you gift cards to Chili's and Amazon and.
Yeah, and, and I think there's, there's definitely something that, uh, community engagement group can do, you know, or like, like the PTA now used to do. But there's also something even little, minimal that we, that we as a board can do for, for appreciation. So I'm not talking about something grand. I know that we don't have, but, but, you know, we can. We, we've done it every year, but in different.
Put it on the calendar and.
So I put it in the calendar.
Forget about.
And you've just, just forward that, make sure, because that, that's what was supposed to be in here. Does Krista have a copy?
She has a copy. I gave it to her. She does. And I copy Alicia too on that one. And I did just the, the reading one and then I did one that she could edit it if we needed to, so.
So like in the school calendar, you're saying you would have teacher appreciation week?
No.
No, 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 no. In our board goals.
Do your board one.
Even though it's not a goal.
Oh, I get it. The goals and everything.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Even though it's not a goal, I, so that's the only reason I was sharing it. It's not a goal, but I took the liberty to add it. To keep it in our mind. It is kind of a goal, but.
Right.
It's a good idea.
I like that. Good.
On your time management calendar, you don't forget your anniversary. It has nothing to do with work, but it's on your work time management calendar, right?
It's not, you're gonna have lots of trouble.
Important thing to remember.
Cannot function.
You have more faith in your right up here than I have in my right.
What is my turn?
I don't know.
I think we're through the three, five V S B A retreats.
I think we talked about that, didn't we? Oh, V S B, not our retreat.
That's in October.
V S B A retreat?
You wanted on the agenda.
No, I went, well, no, I wanted the retreat, V S B A, yeah, I can give you a report on the V S B A. The retreat was on the, on the Washington Central retreat. Sorry, it just, it just got put together and we already talked about the retreat. It just do not forget about to talk about the retreat, but I brought it up in the other one. As, as far as the, the V S, V S B A is, uh, update, I'm just gonna open that up here. You guys all received the email. Sue's been doing a great job keeping up with what's going on in the State House. I think two, and Bill probably can speak better to this, two highlights to share is in May ten, less, not last Tuesday, so May ten. It was May eighth, I believe, on a Tuesday, there was a, a press conference at the, at the State House where it's one of the first times all, everybody, the NEA, V S B A, Super Ten Association, Principals Association, Parent educators association. Am I forgetting somebody?
Uh, there's an apparel one.
It was not a par, but she, no, there was a par one, Jean, what was her?
Business office, business off, business officials.
But the younger lady, she was really.
And she was from the, and Meg was from the, um, from Students, Directors of Student Services Association. B C S V A.
B C S V A. So they all participated in a, in a press conference to try to get the governor and legislators to not make a decision on the budget behind closed doors, but in, up in committees so that they could have, um, input from, from the public. Legislators have said yes to that and the governor is still saying that he might veto the, the budget.
Which he hasn't done yet.
But he hasn't done yet.
Saying that, but they're starting coming back.
Coming back Wednesday.
They're coming back Wednesday for a special session. So we don't really know what he's gonna do for the budget or not. And then, let me just open this email here. And then there, the, the NEA had a, an event on Saturday that I told, uh, Ruben and Bill and Alicia that I was gonna participate on and they had just asked me to speak as from the school board's point of view. And I was very clear that I was not, you know, it was not necessarily reflected, the opinion of either board that I represented. The event, it went really well and Bernie showed up, so it ended up being more than we thought. And Rebecca Holcombebe, Holcombe was there too. So it was really nice. It was not as well attended as we, the high school gym was, I don't know, maybe three quarters full, but not completely, completely full. And it was the same take, trying to hope that he's not gonna veto the, the, the budget. And then the only other important thing that we have talked, we didn't have an upgrade, an update on the preschool stuff, but we did get a update in your, so it was on the email, but we didn't update it ourselves at our last meeting because they didn't, we didn't have time of any changes on that. The only update was on independent schools, which doesn't really affect us, but there've been some positive changes on that. Do you have anything else still that you, I, I, the preschool, you said it didn't really affect us.
The preschool is, uh, not much at all. I wouldn't say it was really, it's going to a study committee to see how they can make things better.
So that's all.
Daniel answered everything.
Yeah. So the, the twenty, it's not gonna affect us because we can provide more, more time when it's going back to the study.
That, that didn't go through as the number of hours. The other number of hours hasn't changed.
Okay.
No, it's really just going to a study from what I read. I read it quickly this af, this afternoon.
Yeah, so like I said, I didn't really read that one, the last one that came in, so.
I'm, I'm actually not trying to keep up too much because until we get through the special session, I think everything's on the table right now.
Yeah, and that's the dangerous part.
Everything's on the table.
Three point six fiscal management questionnaire.
So this is an annual questionnaire that you've seen for three years. I have the official one for you, Ruben, to sign. But we just need to have it in the minutes that you had a discussion here at the board and had a chance to ask me any questions. Um, I can tell you this hasn't changed and it hasn't changed so much as in it still has our old web address on. I can tell you this hasn't changed, and it hasn't changed so much as in, it still has our old web address on it that doesn't work anymore, as it was pointed out to me at D O D E. So, um, you'll see on the second page, it says available at W C S U online dot org, we gotta, we'll change that. We, our auditors like to see that it's been, you've had a chance to look it over and discuss it, it's required by state statute. It hasn't popped anything for our auditors in the way in which we answer it, and we haven't had anything back from the state.
Check.
All right. Reports to the board, administration.
You've already heard from me.
So we're not here to.
But, but you're not gonna say. I don't know, Bill, if you have anything.
Um, I did not do an April report, but I have a quite extensive May report that's gonna come out from the superintendent. I've actually started writing past day or so, um, so there wasn't anything great, anything that extensive in April. And you got the board calendar, that's all I've been talking about.
Fiscal report?
Yes, on page twenty-six. There, the only thing that's really has, we've been able to update the interest income for Eastmont Piler.
We're closing down.
Yeah, everything's closing down, we're just about, actually Lori asked me today, we'll probably have an estimated end of year report for you on June sixth. So, most of the P O's, everything's, in the elementary schools, most of that stuff is clear, but not completely.
I make a nitpitt observation. Last meeting, we discussed Anne Freezer to come off roof and freezer.
Okay.
Off the note.
Because that's not where it was funded.
Yep.
I didn't go in detail on the food part, but that still looks good, when I looked at the total numbers.
Our collections are in very good shape also. Two hundred doll, typically it's two hundred dollars or less, schoolwide including staff, so it's, you know, a couple dollars here and there for children.
So much easier now.
Oh, yes. We have tightened that up.
I know, too.
I already did four point three.
Yeah, that's a question, yeah, that's a question, I was, I was, I was worried about, let him speak to us.
All right, um, policy committee?
Uh, we met last week, we have new members on the policy committee, it will be a different committee than it has to be. We reviewed some things, we had a lot of discussion, I don't really think we. Um, I don't really think that there's anything to share.
I think you should share your observations about the committee. And if you don't, I will.
Um, it has been in the past that our committee has felt the S B A board or those model policies makes sense for all the schools to reduce the numbers of wordsmithing and different schools having ones that are wordsmithed and the change, I think is going to cause some change in that respect. And um, there was also, well, the comment was, we are not a rubber stamp committee, we have our own attorneys. So um, I kind of got a little hair on my neck, got up and I said, I don't think any of those were a rubber stamp committee before. There's a reason there's a V S B A, and there's a reason they do this, and um, so I, I don't really know what we're in for other than nitpicking maybe.
Sounds like we're in for what we had five or six years ago, and it'll just become defunct.
Well, I don't think it's going, it's going to be allowed as far as.
So was it the majority or was just one person?
No, it's, it's three.
Oh, two.
Five, six.
Is it a shift of three new people?
Yeah, it is.
Out of how many?
Out of, out of six.
Six, but we don't ever have one from U thirty-two.
Yeah, it doesn't show.
So, so it sounds to me, so it sounds to me that what we need is some eh, education.
I thought it was a well-oiled machine until last week.
Well, maybe some, some training.
I think some guidance from the S U board. About what the purposes of the policy committee is needed.
We got quite a few passed before, you know, that have gone through, so they don't have to be reviewed again for a while. Uh, my feeling as the representative from this board and just being who I am, is having things that are in line. We're all educating the same kids, going into the same world, going, it made sense, and to make it a lot easier for the schools to have their websites up to date, that was another comment that came up was, so what is our notebook, what are our policies, things are a mess, well, we're getting them, I thought in not a mess, but that doesn't mean things have been caught up as well. And um, I think we were moving forward and there were some more comments than I've heard before, well, it used to be, or that kind of, we used to do it this way, so I'm hoping we, it was just like a first meeting, and, but.
So this should come up at the executive committee.
I think it should, I really do, because I think eh, we were making pretty good progress, things were going through the S U board when we met at U thirty-two for their first reading, second readings, whatever, and um, I think the board itself had been, um, not board, committee, looking at the V S B A language carefully. And then realizing, okay, they vetted it, um, so some of the questions that came up about a policy eh, there were, I don't know who had put the comments, but it went against statute.
That's the Romney.
That's that Romney board, and then.
Romney principle preservation.
Yes, and the Romney reps said, I don't even know why this board's looking at it, and we said, well, it's our job as a policy committee to look at all commit policies.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so.
Reflects a change in boards and their reps.
Yeah.
It'll come to go to the executive committee for discussion and clarification.
But it sounds like we have some trust to gain, and the only way to gain that trust is by giving them some understanding on some, how we operate. You know, like, because if we just tell them, because I might know who's, it's not gonna, we somehow need to.
Well, I think an understanding of why.
Understanding, yeah.
Policies that are the same make sense.
Yeah.
If my child goes to Calis and let's say I'm divorced and my other child goes to Middlesex or something, because we live in different communities, it's kind of nice if they're under the same policies.
Yeah, and that, and keep hammering and that, it's all our kids.
It doesn't mean you lose your personality at your school.
Yes, and that they're all our kids, keep talking about that, so I.
So, my voice is going to be what it has been, but the V S B A model ones we look at and we, because there's some that, how many of them are required?
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight are required, how many have we gotten done?
I, it's just the past two months that we've gotten to all of them, my six years here.
Yeah.
That they're actually all in the books.
We were making really good progress, and.
There are other ways to do it.
So.
But we wanna build, we wanna build trust.
Matthew, will that be on our agenda to discuss?
You might wanna send something to Matthew.
I think it's worth discussing at the executive committee. Cause I know my next meeting, I have a policy meeting till five-thirty and a meeting in my home school at five-thirty, starting at five-thirty, and I said, well, in the past, we were always done in time, and I'd only be a few minutes late. That didn't happen last Monday.
Well, we'll discuss it at the executive committee and see where it goes. There may be less alignment than recently. So some boards may be going their own route.
I was the only one that remained in person there.
You can't, you can't mandate it, we'll discuss it at the executive committee level.
I just want you to show what you show for yourselves as boards.
Yeah, and, and we don't have to mandate it, mandate anything, we, you know, we have to gain that trust, so we have to.
We can't mandate anything.
That's what I mean, I'm not saying we have to mandate it, we have to encourage the understanding and the trust so that we can work together.
We can work on, we can work on building it. Okay.
School start time, so we've had two public forums, um, and a couple meetings. And the survey, everybody should have received the survey link. Which I realized today that I had not posted to Front Porch Forum, has it been posted?
I posted Front Porch Forum last week.
And it was on W C A F.
Okay, right, that's right. So that's where that's at, we're gathering input from the, um, from the community survey. There, there's, there've been a couple of pretty vocal folks that showed up that are pretty dead set against any change.
Yeah, there was that letter.
Which is actually, the optimist in me thinks that's positive, because we're gonna talk about it now. And it's gonna come up at some point, so it might as well be early. So now we're in, I mean, it was like, people are against eh, something that isn't anything, is sort of my take on it, like, any kind of change was gonna be fought no matter what. Which I think is unfortunate, but that's my own personal observation. So we're in the data gathering phase where we're finding out from the community, um, if you've done the survey, then you've seen it, where it's, you know, what start time works for the younger kids, for you, what do you think is ideal, rank them, what are your priorities for, um, for when, for, you know, short bus routes or saving money or, you know, um, and asking people to prioritize them. I have no idea how many responses we've gotten.
Four hundred and six so far.
That's pretty good.
So this morning, I'd say that, so that's a qualifying sample for the number, if you use the parent numbers. Yeah, we're almost twenty-five percent.
Hopefully I'm an N of one, but I got confused on it, cause I didn't read the instructions.
School specific?
I didn't read the, the instructions specific enough, and I didn't realize it was one set for elementary and one set for high school. And I answered the elementary school in exactly the same way and answered the high school one.
I did the same thing.
I caught myself doing the same.
And you can't go back and correct it, so.
It is what it is. There's also a staff and a student survey out too right now.
So next steps are to gather and compile all of that and reflect on it as a committee. And see, see what we hear. And I had no window into that, so.
So, one question I had, are students filling it out, because I've seen.
There's a staff and a student.
A student, okay, can I hear student, okay.
It's gone out to three different groups, is it the same?
No, it's different, it's different, it's different, the staff and students are a little different, um.
Who sent that out?
There was a letter to the editor from a student, do you see it?
I sent it out to all staff, I'll probably do it again this week, I did it last week.
Yeah. There were two of them.
I think it's safe to say.
It was a minority, maybe.
I think there's a reasonable chance that if a change is proposed, it's going to get noisy. Because there are some folks who have already come forward who are going to be dead set against any change. For better, worse, good, bad, indifferent. Uh, it's, it's gonna, it's going to require people to, to, to change, and change is hard. So, we're trying to be mindful of all of that, and what we're really trying to do is, is gather whatever objections and positives are out there, um, upfront, so I think we're in the process of doing that.
Yeah.
And school quality committee, I believe that brings us to.
So I was, like I said, I was not able to be at this meeting, so I had to take thinking to Dr., but I did talk to Carrie after the meeting, and I talked to him at the last U thirty-two board meeting, and eh, so I think Bill might be more qualified to talk about what went on at that particular meeting eh, I talked to Shani too, and.
Yeah, I really just tried to listen, because it was board members reflecting on what the data said to them.
Yeah, so we all took turns, we, so we made our job, if we are gonna ask other board members to do it, to go through all the data and, and reflect on it, for us, and, you know, the concerning part was always math for, for a lot of them, and a lot of us. It was just like, you know, some, he's trying to pinpoint, is it teaching, is it, you know, what, what it is, and how, what, what is the data telling us? That's what we were trying to, sort of the same conversation we just had about eh, that manner and the, eh, the observations that we did. It was, it's a similar conversation that we've been having, we tasked ourselves eh, before tasking the boards and groups to, to really look at the data and, and what is it saying to us eh, how do we feel now that we have seen the data in eh, and then Bill, I, I read this eh, minutes and, you know, Bill suggested that we, that, you know, creating that, the culture of learning, doing more professional development, you know, so there were, there were things that we can eh, that we can do, but we basically did three questions, you know, what is the data telling us, what do we wanna do, with, what else do we want, what do we wanna do? What else do we wanna know, and a part of it, it was, for the longest time, as a quality committee, I feel like we've been struggling with that policy eh, instead of, you know, moving into policy, and I think the more that we've been talking about it, that there's, might be like a mixture of two systems that might be better as a committee, but we really eh, policy governance is something that we're trying to base this from. That, that was most, you know, so instead of trying to tell people what you can't do, you know, just give them more freedom of eh, no, can do, give them more eh.
It's actually better to tell them what they can't do.
What you can't do, sorry, yeah, can't do.
Than tell them what you can do.
Yeah, so just tell them what you can't do so that they have the creativity to do whatever they need, they need to do, but it's, we seem to be shifting, at least in my last conversation from Matt and Shani on what the balance is eh, there, but we looked at this with that mindset, you know, in policy governance.
But I, I mean, I'm, I will be excited, I am excited. And I'll be getting even more excited, the more that we spend time as boards looking at data and saying what it means to us, and collectively as a board, what's the direction that we would like to see things going, and I believe that for one of the biggest steps for Washington Central right now is to be, is to feel, and this is throughout the system, from boards to teachers to administrators, that we feel better about making decisions based on data and slow down the doing. That we're willing to say until we have clear data, and that we're gonna accept the data, we, we, we trust our, the folks that have chosen the data, the assessments we use, which has been done collaboratively with teachers and administrators, to say, that is our local assessment system, that's the data we have. So what's it telling us, and where do we need to go next, and not try to use an excuse, well, those assessments don't work.
So let's do this other shiny thing over here.
Right, exactly, well, we, we've said on those, and there is no one perfect assessment, and the problem with assessments is they can be misused for purposes they weren't intended, we're doing, I think, a really good job in Washington Central of saying, we're using them for the intent they have, and we don't try to overread into them. If we need to know exactly how my daughter Megan's doing deliberately, we run a diagnostic assessment around here, we don't just do a screening assessment, tell us what that means. But if we're gonna use, talk about, like you saw all these assessments tonight, those are meant to do on a large scale, so a diagnostic assessment is not a good assessment to tell you how Eastmont Piler Elementary School or Washington Central is doing. It's the misuse of that assessment. So I think we've got that defined, and it's taken us a while to get there, but then for the boards, and I asked for this in the school quality, I want the boards to ask us for goals and hold us accountable on the data. We, that's good pressure for Alicia and I to have, to say, so what is. We, that's good pressure for Alicia and I to have, to say, so what is not, not for boards to tell us how to get there, but say, so what do you have for a goal based on that data and we'll tell you whether we think it's acceptable or not. And that's the system I wanna see us really move into, cause that's good pressure, that pressure will help the authority and responsibility be distributed all the way down through the system.
And I, you know, as far as, eh, reporting in the committee, I, I, I think it's my favorite committee. I think it's just, it's, eh, there were two more members, so I was not there at this last meeting, but it is really, you know, the kind of work that is exciting. And it's, I think we're all totally devoted to that work, so it's.
And one, one of the things we're trying to do in that group is say, what are the balances of monitoring reports? We're never gonna get them right, right out of the box, we're gonna get better, it's gonna be a, we're gonna get better as we go. It's gonna be the versions idea of getting the next version better than the last version. Um, so how can we schedule the minor reports? And one of the things that, um, Alicia and I have heard from our colleagues on the leadership team is much, it's much more effective and we actually do better analysis when we all say we're doing the same report. And so to go right to the conversation we were having earlier, it's not that we don't wanna show you that data, I'm more than willing to do it. And Flor, it's not about lowering the expectations, it's about raising everyone's expectations. Everyone can give you the same data that, every school can give the same data that Alicia has given you on interventions. I think those are good expectations. But it's just trying to say, it works better for the leadership team, cause we devote a day to it, or half a day to it, and we, and then you guys go and work some more, a lot more after that. But we say, how do we wanna present this and how do we wanna do this together?
Yeah, the message was, because I, I knew, and Stephen, I had you in my mind. Um, when we were at the leadership team, I, I knew what you were looking for, for data, and you wanted to see the interventions. And are specifically are the interventions working, and I brought that up to the leadership team. And understandably, it became pretty clear to me very quickly that, um, I think what's happened when, when we shifted to doing principal reports in the full board packet, right? And you can see everybody's everything, there's conversation at different board level, eh, at the board level with principals, and it's happened here also. Um, you could do this, or what, you know, this, this report has this, but yours doesn't have it. And there, there starts to have that comparison, that's not helping. Um, so we agreed, um, to stick with the same slides this time for all schools are looking at the exact same. It was hard for me to do that.
Yeah, it was, it was, she challenged me afterwards on that, but I said, no, I will take it on the chin from your board. It's my role as superintendent, I'm the one that responds, reports to the board, but the team decided this is where we're going. Um, and it doesn't mean we can't go there, it means we wanna go there together. So I would say that's the conversation to have.
Do all schools have tier-two support systems?
Yeah, so this.
Yeah, they can, they can, that's why I said, they can do the data, that's not the problem, the issue is, it's the doing it together. Because the power for me is in the team, just as Flor was saying, so for the leadership team to do it together, where a couple of them sit down and look at each other when they're first doing initially, and I don't know if you did it this time, but I know other times, Alicia, you sat with one or two of your colleagues and said, let's fit, like in October, let's finish this together.
And using the same measurements is what's so valuable.
Yeah, and then the conversation actually gets to, hey, how'd you do that?
Across the SU.
Yeah. That's what starts happening with the conversations.
Right.
It's not a competition, but, what are you doing that's working, or wow, yours look great.
It's so frustrating to me.
Because frankly, frankly, the reason why there aren't names up there, I deliberately did that, I would not give anyone else the name of the other school. I mean, you could go and watch all the Orca videos, and there's a couple that aren't, figure it out. But it's like, it's not about competition. It's about all kids being successful.
But if we can see other schools are doing well, it doesn't matter what school it is. But across the SU is helping or make, it's not, that's what I think is valuable. And then the leadership team is talking to each other and having that information, sending teachers over to watch something that's working well.
How, you know, what are you doing?
What does your intervention time look like, how is it different?
Frustrating to me.
So I just have to say this, and I'm gonna say truth to power, I'm trying to think of the best way to say it. I'm actually a little scared to say it.
So you're scared to say it, don't say it.
No, because I think it needs to be said. That's, has been the culture of Washington Central and working separately. The more, as you said, Flor, the more that we get people working together, the competition will start to go away. But it takes years to counter that.
But, but I think it's not just, it's, it's the more that we understand, the, the more, the more knowledgeable, the more educated that, that we as board members are, the, the easier that it is to work together. You know, and the easier that is, where, that is to trust.
So, from my perspective though, we see that there's schools that are doing maybe a little bit better than us in math. I trust Alicia knows which school is which, she's gonna go to that school, you know, you can go to that school, I don't necessarily.
During the leadership teams, they can.
I don't need to know.
I have an even simpler question, what can this board do that would alleviate that?
Just keep working on people, always working together when it feels like it's hard to do that or we wanna go do our own thing. Even though that might mean giving up some, from what this board wants to do, say we're more, it's more important for us to all be together than to necessarily get what East Montpelier needs, and hopefully we'll get both.
Yeah, and that, to me, when I said that comment about, you know, putting weights on, on, on your better athlete, it's, it's more about kids, you know, we're always talking about kids, kids don't have a year to lose. So we know, as, as long as we're not, like suddenly we're saying, you know, not everybody is doing tier-two interventions, we're gonna stop doing tier-two interventions, you know, that's not what we're saying, right? Because everybody's doing tier-two interventions. So as long as we're not slowing to the detriment of our kids.
We're not going to the lowest common denominator.
Exactly, you know, we, we wanna, just as we ask teachers to do differentiated teaching, you know, we would ask our leaders to do differentiated leadership, you know, so do you, we have to meet everybody where it is and bring everybody up from the bottom, from whatever you, you know, everybody has a different way to say it, but.
This is killing the policy a little bit with the comment of, but our communities are all so different. No, they're really, they are.
It's about the kids.
And that's, the kids are all going to U thirty-two and they're going back out into the world. And it's not about making, well, it's because your kids get to wear hats and our kids don't get, it's not those little things. If we have common curriculum, we have common expectations, and they're high expectations, then the data will show how some of this is or isn't working, and that's for the leaders to talk about and figure out. But feeding it to us is helping us see it and make decisions fiscally. Um, as far as, but it's not about us being different or.
No, there's a difference in the culture of governance, more than there's a difference in the culture of the towns.
And every school can have its own little quirks and decorations and whatever, but in the end, it's about the learning and the opportunities.
It's supposed to be.
Yeah.
So why show us all the schools within the district?
Why what?
Why show us?
Why show that slide?
Cause that's what the leaders are working with when they're making decisions, I think it helps us understand.
And I, I tell you, when I saw this slide, eh, I, I couldn't really tell which school was school until Stephen did the same thing, he kinda pointed to who U thirty-two was.
We've been pointing out each, everyone knows who, I mean, you saw the data on the slide before, so we just said.
You just matched the numbers.
Exactly.
So then you figured out what was the number and then we were trying to figure out, but what it told me and everybody else, eh, agreed too, they talked about it, eh, at the end, eh, seeing it all together, it's like definitely we, we don't have the time for another initiative, so I'm not trying to say that's why we need to do that, that, that there's, you know, meaningful education during the summer is something that we have to figure out how, how to do, you know, like they are spending, at U thirty-two especially, they're spending a lot of time catching up those sixth graders. So they, we asked, they asked even several questions, there were not a lot of people, so it was Matthew and me, and then Matthew left. So about, you know, what, is it, eh, coming into school and having all the social part, is it?
There's so many factors.
And there could be so many factors, but one clear thing was that, you know, having something during the summer would be significant. And we know that from the data, even in our own, in our own students, so seeing it all together shows us eh, the same thing. It's not, it keeps telling the story that it's all our kids. And maybe it's easier now, I think that we've been talking about that, that's one good thing about Act forty-six, right? It made us really dig into looking at everybody and talking with everybody. Maybe not, didn't have the same effect on everybody, but all we can do is hope.
Everybody inch to, at least a little bit closer toward.
So from a board perspective, what's our discussion? What are we doing together?
What are we doing as a?
How does that data inform us to, so he, here's what I would say. If we wanna do something together, then together, there's a standard that we wanna set for Washington Central. And it's, we want eighty percent proficient or very proficient in literacy within three years, and we wanna see this progression year to year. And all the boards agree on that, and that's what everyone's moving towards. But what we saw today, so what?
Yeah, and that, I mean, that's why I said what I said earlier about, with the data is, I'm looking for direction from the boards about what you want for the data, because I, I, frankly, I need that, and the leadership team needs that from the boards to say, we need to know, because what, I don't know if that's good enough, or, I mean, that's the discussion we were in the fall.
But that's what we were talking about in the quality committee, you know, what, what is this, is this acceptable? Is this where we want, but eh, whether we were looking at it, the way I see it, Stephen, even if we were all together, we had one single board and we were seeing the data for everybody aggregated, we would probably be looking at another district to compare our data, right? That's what it's helpful, right now we're just, you know, so maybe we see math is better in, I don't know, I can't remember right now, what, what can we learn?
I think it's a mistake to compare us to someone else. We set what our standards are, and we compare to how we're doing about where we wanna be. I think it's, I think it's a huge mistake, I think it's a huge mistake to compare how we're doing to the other schools in the SU. You know, we could be the best school in the SU and the sixth worst in the state. What do I care where we are in the SU? I could care less.
Because we're a famous middle school.
I think we, if it's about the kids, we, and we're talking proficiency, and we're talking the, the local measures we have, it should be, this is where we want our kids. I, so we're lower in math than we are in literacy. I, I'm making stuff up, so don't take. It's like, you know what, next year, we've got some more, I, I, I'm not gonna tell Alicia how to do it, but I want the math numbers to move significantly more, so I want a, additional five percent jump. That's the target. I mean, I think that's what we can do together as boards. But I mean, I have to be, express some negative part, some boards won't have the resources to do that. And we can't help them.
Right.
So maybe we can't do things together, maybe their targets need to be different than our targets.
But their, ideally, their priorities would be largely aligned.
Right, because we can, I could be. We can work to move in that direction, I don't disagree.
But that's the leadership of the superintendent, what do you mean with the leadership team?
Not for the priorities, the board, no, we're just gonna say, because I, what I, what I interpret as priorities for the SLOs is they're all equal, and so we try to equally resource them, which we don't. Um, and so, I mean, because one of the things that'll come down, and it's a good discussion for the board to have, and it's one frankly, the board should be right in the middle of. So approximately about forty percent of the kids are proficient in math, about seventy to seventy-five percent are in reading.
SU one.
SU one. Um, if you take a look at that, okay, so, um, you wanna increase the math, you wanna increase the literacy, okay, so there's not an endless set of resources, whether it be time and or money. So what's the comfort level of the, well, maybe, or is there a way to combine it? Cause I'd, I'd like not to be in the game, I'd like not to be in the zero-sum game, game. I'd rather be in the, eh, how can we make this better and lift other things? But in my, and I've been very public about this, for me, as an educator for my twenty-five years, I believe everything starts from literacy and numeracy. And that kids need to be numerate and literate, and, and that our system's very much set up that way. And I, I need that reflection. And I, I don't wanna go there by myself because I think that's a dangerous place to go. Frankly, I think that's not a healthy system.
I don't think you're by yourself when you're with your leadership team, with the principals and the people looking at the data. And figuring out, there's always room for improvement.
We can figure out how to get there, it's that, are we, what, what type of, what is the board? I, and Callas, Callas has been here with me this for two years, what are your priorities? You know, because Flor and I have had these discussions, and I, I can see what she, I can read her from here. And I'm, I'm, and, you know, so it's which, you know.
Do you wanna lose art and music?
I was gonna.
We love speed. But, you know, and I, like I say, you know, but I mean, numeracy is also music, right? You're learning, or literacy, you're learning to read music, like, and, you know, and I, for other kids, it was different, so we don't need to get down that road with our discussions with Bill.
Internally with ourselves, we're never gonna get down.
No, 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 I, I just like felt like we were, if we can't, I, I'm happy to talk about it, I'd email Bill about it.
We recognize there's room for growth.
Yeah.
And I think it would be likely.
But how much growth do we want?
So when we wrote, when the leadership team first met and started talking about this, we, and we talked about, I don't know if you remember, like what percentage, cause the old, um, whatever it was called, strategic plan, you know, had percentages, like you were talking about, and we said, no, it's all students, it's, it's all students will be proficient.
In all subjects.
In all subjects, I mean, that was the, that was our target.
And we got reflection back from board members that that was too aggressive.
We can't financially.
Right, that's, that's what we got.
Can't get there.
I understand that, but how do you not set that as a goal?
I agree.
So you were a big supporter of no child left behind?
No, it's.
No.
That goal was a hundred percent.
But what does it mean, what, what does it mean?
Who is not in that hundred percent? Are we to say this child shouldn't be in that, all students? But that is, that, we had that conversation for days at a summer retreat, just going back and forth, do we set a target at ninety percent, ninety-five percent over X number of years, or do we just say all students?
Well, it's gonna be a hundred percent over X number of years, but it's gonna have to be a lot of years.
Maybe it's, to be a little more scoped about it, we say, we would like, I'm making numbers up, but if we saw a, a ten percent change in math this year, we'd like to see a fifteen percent change next year. Uh, wait, I, I, these are the wrong numbers, but we, we would like to see, it was, whatever, it was forty-nine to fifty-one percent. You know, next year, we'd like to see it more like, you know, sixty-five, thirty-five. Closer, we, we'd like to, maybe it's as simple as we'd like to close the gap, the achievement gap between literacy and numeracy, we would like to see some forward progress on that, right? Because that has been something that this SU, that this school has struggled with for a decade anyway, and probably two, I think this was going on when Justin was first entering the school system. So, you know, the, this conversation has been going on for a long time. So saying that we want everybody to be proficient, of course we want everybody to be proficient, but that's not directed enough to give the administrators a task that they can sort of dive into. So maybe the direction is, you know, whatever distance the gap is, that the gap in achievement between literacy So maybe the direction is, you know, whatever distance the gap is, that the gap in achievement between literacy and numeracy is cut in half. You know, and maybe it's two years, I don't know. But just in terms of sort of a little more direction from us, in terms of what we're looking for, that, would that be helpful?
Yes.
You know, that's not to say deprioritize literacy, but it is saying, look, we obviously have been doing, we've been focused more on literacy for a long time. That's, that's reflected in our perennial gap between the number of kids that are proficient and literate, and the ones that are numerate, so-
You've had a math specialist in the district for a couple years?
Right, so we, I don't think we have to be prescriptive about how this works. I think that we can agree that that's not enough.
Right.
And we'd like to see that gap close up.
And then we have to support the administrators shifting resources to accomplish that.
I understand that. I, I think that is, that is the-
Or look at how resources are.
That is what we empower them to do every day.
Time studies or whatever.
So that may mean that, you know, the next budget cycle, when we're talking about tier two supports, there's a shift in those tier two, I don't know. But maybe those tier two supports start to laser in on that, right? And they focus less on these other things. That's not for us to-
Yeah, that is exactly the conversations that we're having, looking at this data all year long, right? So those numbers have real children attached to them, and we're saying, so this child is not making that progress. What are we going to do? And why I came to you in January to show you our interventions and how, you know, they got whittled away at, and you, you put support in for increase next year, because we know that, you know, each number is attached to a human being who is or is not making progress.
Sufficient progress.
But Bill, to address what you said, we can do that for our board.
Yes.
All we can do is share that information with other boards. There's, there's not a mechanism other than sharing what we have, to be, being willing to collaborate, offering up. But-
That is true.
Boards can do whatever they want.
That's right.
And the priorities can be completely different.
They can. And I mean, as long as we're not a single district with a single board, that will continue to be the case. But we have been able to show that, like, the tier two support system that we piloted, right?
Yeah.
Works. And as a result, the rest of the district is doing it. So, you know, I'm not saying there's no, there's, it's just putting some data, actionable, real data about the results. And we may try something and it totally doesn't work, and that's actionable or unactionable.
Well, and that's why I wanted to see data to support that. In my mind, tier two was put in place to close the gap between free and reduced lunch and non-free and reduced lunch. It had nothing, I shouldn't quite put that, the priority wasn't increasing the number of students proficient in math and increasing the number of students proficient in literacy. It was closing the gap between free and reduced lunch and non-free and reduced lunch.
It's an unspoken priority, we didn't want anybody-
It wasn't one or the other, it was both.
These measures would benefit everyone.
But the data that we've seen, or what I've seen, has been more around free and reduced lunch and non-free and reduced lunch, and it hasn't been around what's the impact on math and literacy. That's why I was interested in seeing it. I'll bite my tongue. I mean, I, I understand, I'm willing to. Okay.
But knowing that all schools have interventions, and there is an October monitoring report, is there a way that all schools can present, right? Like, this is what we presented for spring, is there something that can get to that for all schools in October?
And that's what we're trying to do at the quality committee, that's exactly. So like at the last, at the meeting in April, I was just going through the minutes, and at the meeting in March, we didn't ask this question again. We kind of forgot, Carrie had said that, what else do we need to know about our students' math performance? Are we, are we seeing all, is there something we're missing? That you could, you, about the students' math performance, is there anything?
No, you're seeing, I mean, you're seeing, I mean, you're seeing the data, I mean, I can show you with multiple measures, the same percentages, pretty much.
Okay.
Good, so we trust the data.
So we do-
Yeah, we trust the data. And we actually, we're thinking we're getting to a place where we're starting, you know, in October. I said we didn't have alignment between the system. If things carry out the way they've been carrying out so far with a very tiny sample right now.
Looking at us back in the local data, should be alignment.
So that's a good thing, then we can start using that local data to really drive changes in practice.
And when you meet with teachers, I assume you ask questions like, how many minutes a day are we teaching math? Or would this mean-
I don't ask them that, I know that.
We know that.
Yeah.
Well, but would that, I would think when you're looking at data and you see this gap, or you see-
So we've, we've pretty standardized across the system for math instruction.
There is an expectation of literacy and math instruction across the SU. And what happens as a result, and I talked to you about this a few months ago, is that the other areas, like global studies and science, those minutes are less, because the emphasis is on, right? That expectation is, you will have ninety minutes of literacy and sixty minutes of math, and additional writing instruction and spelling. When you add all of that up, that is the priority in our school.
And if you've got ninety minutes of literacy and sixty minutes of math, and the scores are proportionally reflective of that, then-
True. Should we have ninety minutes of math?
Hopefully, it doesn't make our-
There's a lot more in literacy.
Literacy encompasses a lot, but-
You gotta be able to read to do that math.
Right.
Yeah, but that's outdoor math, there's the-
Right, like there's- And science math.
There's science math.
I'm not even gonna touch it, I'm gonna stop, because this is going on too long.
Okay. I believe that wrap-up conversation about school quality.
I was wondering where this was, I was thinking of figuring out.
That's what I was thinking that we were not figuring out.
And we are moving on to five point oh action agenda, five point one approve hire of a point four two pre-K teacher.
Yes.
So we, we participated, you have in your packet, there was an interview in committee that consisted of parents and community members, classroom teacher, students, myself. We interviewed a number of candidates. We had some very strong candidates that we brought forward, had them do a demonstration lesson in the pre-K classroom, and second round interviews. As I shared with you last month, I'm, I am equally as excited about our new hire and the person we're bringing before you tonight. So it's Robert Reed, they call him Mr. Rob. And he has tons of experience teaching pre-K. He's actually been a leader in his SU, and he has traveled around to that kind of region of the state, providing professional development to teachers around pre-K instruction, integrating literacy and math in pre-K instruction. He, just to have, just, I'll, I'll just share this. So he went into the classroom of students that he will be inheriting next year, and one of the students said, in this class had had three guest teachers, and one little boy said to him, we hope you come back. And that was the only comment like that from a child, and he said, I really hope I come back too. And it was pretty magical, so very excited about.
I think we did our reading recovery training at the same time, but with different trainers, I'm pretty sure.
And he also, he was a faculty in special education, was a reading recovery teacher, was a coach. So he has a wealth of knowledge beyond just pre-K.
That's awesome. Thank you.
I would take a motion to-
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Six point oh-
Oh, I forgot to add you one, accept the resignation, I forgot to add that one.
So we probably should have flipped these two, but as you all know, Beth Downing's going back up to Calis to teach two sections of pre-K, and you just need to formally approve her resignation.
I would take a motion.
Do you need one of this?
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Elizabeth Dunn.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now I think we're on.
One more, sorry. Um, I, so I just wanna say about Beth, she will be very missed.
Yeah, I know, yeah, we should do something, say-
Except with regret.
Yeah, we should thank her for many-
She's an incredible teacher.
And she's been here a really long time too, at least, up and on for the past twelve years.
To our school. Also, just to let you know, it's not on here, but on Friday afternoon, I received a letter that I have for you, but I don't think you need it. We have a retirement of a paraprofessional. Doris Phillips will be retiring at the end of the school year. Forty years. I asked her how long, Dory, and it was a hard decision. And I, I told her, just like with Mrs. Barnum, she is welcome to come back and sub and mentor students, and we don't wanna see her gone. And she's, of course, a grandmother of two students here, so she won't be gone for good, but she is ready to not be here every day.
Okay. Now I think we're on to the board order?
We have to let Mr.-
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the board orders in the amount of eighty thousand, four hundred and one dollars and forty-one cents.
I'll second it.
Then I had a question. The very first three checks are issued on the same date to three different organizations, and they're identical of five hundred forty-four dollars.
Are those those pre-K payments?
And eighty cents. Is it split up between three?
Let me see that.
If we can see who they're written to, we can tell you.
Probably sounds like a pre-K, probably a pre-K band.
I don't know.
Yes, they are.
Yeah, that's a pre-K tuition.
So it's just an equally divided between three areas?
Remember, it's the same tuition, and yeah, we have to write the checks that way.
Good catch, you know?
No, but I will now. It just, it just seemed odd.
I was like, what if he, cause there's one more down below.
There. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing, I'm hearing, all of those in favor, please say aye.
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 It's gonna pass anyway without my signature, that's already poor.
I, I couldn't find anything, because there was one more below. Well, our, our own retreat were-
So they're trying to, one of the things that's gonna be discussed on the thirtieth, where that will be, that there'll be time in the afternoon, Stephen actually suggested this at the executive committee, that that could happen after the SU board retreat.
On the second.
On the second.
On the second. So that would be a future agenda?
Well, you'll hear more probably after the executive committee meeting on the thirtieth.
Okay.
So that's only if we have enough of our representation here?
That doesn't mean you have to, I think it's one of those things.
Oh, maybe, oh, my goodness.
Discussion executive committee was, the day's pretty well shot, cause you're doing an SU retreat, why not just? And the board retreats typically are between two and four hours. So if the SU retreat ended at three or four, the board retreats typically go in the early evening. Why not just do it all, bang it all out in one day?
Do we know where the board retreat is?
No, not yet. Don't worry about that.
It's just a consideration.
Do you believe board communication, is there anything? That brings us to the German. Yeah, that's eight sixteen.